I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act. The city council meeting is being livestreamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and on YouTube. I want to note the City of Campbell no longer requires face coverings to be worn inside city facilities. However, all are welcome to wear face covering should that make them feel more comfortable. Should health directives from the County of Santa Clara or the Centers for Disease Control change, the city will comply. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Here.
Councilwoman Landry?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Present.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Here. I'm going to ask everybody, if you would, to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you all. So we're going to move on to special presentations and proclamations of which we have two. And our first one is to present certificates of recognition to STEM winners of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, the 2021 Synopsis Championship Science Fair. And we have some guests here. And I'm going to just give a little intro here. And I know Forrest Williams, would you like to say a few words afterwards? You're welcome to come up to the podium. I'm just going to tell everybody why we're here and give you a chance and then we'll introduce the individuals. So Forrest Williams is a board member of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association. We're here recognizing Campbell students. These are STEM winners, so that's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. STEM winners of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association's 2021 Synopsis Championship Science Fair. And through the annual fair competition, hundreds of the area students are challenged to go beyond their classroom studies to do independent project-based research. You don't know what that means till you hear what they did. It's pretty impressive. It's impressive every year, and every year is better than the prior ones. They work independently or in teams. They address questions in the field of computer science, environmental science, medicine, and health chemistry, biology, and a half dozen other categories. Forrest, would you like to add a few words? And then I'll introduce each individual.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. I want to give my appreciation for you taking the time and your busy schedule to recognize these individuals from your city that you're responsible for. And we like to bring them to you and let you know that there are some bright students that are doing great things in your community. The Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association's purpose and mission is to encourage students to participate in science, to discover the wonders and the heartaches of science. We've gone through this pandemic, and you know what it feels like trying to discover and trying to find a solution to many problems. And as we live today, we will give our students who are coming up challenges that they will have to face and help us for the future. So I'm proud of them, and I really thank you for recognizing them.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to, I'm going to call your name. I'm going to recognize you. And then I will come down and present you with a certificate of recognition. But let me, let me announce everybody first. So the first person I have, and if I, if I mispronounce your name, please correct me on the spot. I'm quite, quite happy with that. Alisa Grothie? Not here? Are you here? Is it Alisa Grothie? All right, not here? Okay. Well, let me say Alisa is being, being honored and recognized for being awarded an honorable mention at the championship for the project "A Device to Eliminate Air Bubbles from Ivy Lines." That's pretty impressive, I think. Pretty impressive topic, an important topic. Next, I have Spencer He. And Spencer, you're welcome to stand up and, you know, thank you very much. Spencer is being recognized for being awarded the grand prize alternate at the championship for a project, for this, "Developing a New Autism Diagnosis Process Based on a Hybrid Deep Learning Architecture Through Analyzing Home Videos." Wow. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll come down in a minute. Next, I have Harshini Mania. Is that right? And Harshini is being recognized as honorable mention for a project entitled "Using Deep Learning and Geospatial Data for Disaster Relief Management." Thank you very much. Ishana Manikandan? Not here? Okay. Ishana is being recognized as honorable mention for the project entitled "Determining the Efficiency of Ferrofluid in Removing Oil Spills from Still and Moving Water." Very impressive. Wow. We have Sanskriti Singh. Okay. Being recognized, first award for the project, "A Novel Mask RCNN Model to Segment Heterogeneous Brain Tumors Through Image Subtraction." Wow. Thank you so much. Each one is, each one is equally impressive. It's amazing. There's a good future. And last, but certainly not least, Maria Grothie? Did I, not, not here? Certificate of recognition for honorable mention for the project "I Spy a Bionic Eye: Engineering of a Bionic Eye Prototype That Uses Action Potentials to Convey Retinopathy," not, "Retinopathy," I think it should say, "on a model of the primary visual cortex." I can't even read them, let alone do the project. First of all, congratulations to all of you. That's very impressive. Let me come down. I'd like to come down and meet you and provide you with the, with the certificate of recognition. Harshini?
Thank you so much.
Forrest, is there anything you wanted to add at all? And these, these are, these are amazing accomplishments. Absolutely. The topics blow me away. They do every year, but it is amazing what's going on. And it's encouraging, really encouraging. It's just fascinating to see what people are working on.
Okay, we, we have the Synopsis Championship for all schools within the Santa Clara County. And all the cities are recognizing their students for their accomplishments. The other thing that's important to know is that we also compete in the California State Fair.
Is the mic on? I'm sorry, is the mic on?
I think so, yeah. And from that point, we also compete in the International Science Fair. Now, this science fair has people from all over the world. Can you imagine competing with 70 other countries in the world? And it's amazing to see the children working together and talking about their projects when countries don't even talk to each other. And I say, there's hope for us because people are about lives, they're about learning, about solving some of the many problems that we have. So I'm excited. I'm an engineer. I'm a former city council member, City of San Jose. But this is my passion. My daughter is an engineer. She works for IBM. She's a data analysis, you know, like she, you may pick up the phone and call someone because of some algorithm that she's put together because at this particular time, it is a good time to call, and they will react to going shopping. And also, my son is an engineer, computer, environmental engineer. So, so it's, it's kind of fuzzy and warm to see these kids participate. And you recognize them. You don't know how, how much it means to them to have the project recognized by someone else. Many times we have projects and we put them away, we do them, put them away. No one ever knows about them. But bringing them here and having it, you know, recognized by someone else, it gives them motivation to continue. And it gives me motivation to continue too. So on behalf of the Santa Clara Valley Science and Engineering Fair Association, I want to thank you, all of you, Mayor, Councilmembers, staff, and anyone that helped recognize these students. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing, thank you for bringing this to us each year. And thank you to the students. Your, your work is phenomenal. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all. So we have a second proclamation declaring the month of March 20, 2022 as Youth Art Month in the City of Campbell. Do we have somebody? Oh, Sophia, I see you now. Okay. Sophia Fohost, I hope I said it right. Coordinator of Arts Integrated STEAM Professional Learning and Instructional Support Division of the Santa Clara County Office of Education. Another mouthful. But thank you for being here. March is, is Youth Arts Month, and each March, each March art education is celebrated in local schools and school districts, community arts organizations, and broader communities. And our proclamation designates the month of March 20, 2022 as Youth Art Month throughout the City of Campbell. It supports the County's Office of Education Initiative called Artspiration and demonstrates the city's support for art education in the City of Campbell. Sophia, thank you for joining us. You're not here, but we'll present you with a, with a proclamation separately. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, thank you. That was a really great introduction.
Can you speak up a little bit? A little louder?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. That was a really great introduction. You stole all my words. I do want to say that this month, we are also celebrating the Young Artist Showcase. And so the Santa Clara County Office of Education is the, has the largest collection of youth arts. And this year, we actually unveiled it this past Sunday at the Arts as Emancipatory Education Online Conference in partnership with San Jose State University, the College of, the Lurie College of Education. We were joined by Jenna Sopigal, the 2021 Santa Clara County Poet Laureate, and her youth poet laureate group, as well as Grammy Award-winning alphabet rockers. We will have a dedicated virtual celebration of the Young Artist Showcase on May 19th at 4:00. And again, I am so grateful that the City of Campbell has recognized this Youth Arts Month. My name is Sophia Fohost. And on behalf of the Santa Clara County Office of Education, we would like to thank you for recognizing March. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're very happy to do that. And we'll get, we'll get a proclamation to you. Take care. Thank you. We move to the communication petitions. There are none. Oral request, a portion of the meeting reserved for persons wishing to address the council on items not on the agenda. You may take up to two minutes. Madam Clerk, we have received, have we received any requests? I don't see any cards here.
I have one speaker signed up virtually under oral request, Mr. Ken Johnson.
Okay, Ken, are you there?
There we go. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Ken.
Yep. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, good evening. Ken Johnson, tonight speaking on behalf of the Campbell Chamber Community Foundation. And I just wanted to make everyone aware that this Saturday, we'll be celebrating our 54th Annual Celebrate Campbell Event. And although it's normally a black tie affair, we are happy to celebrate it this year at Orchard City Banquet Hall in a modified version of the event where we will recognize our Citizen of the Year, Mark Thornton from the Home Church, and the three business finalists for Business of the Year, Sports Basement, Darling Fisher, and Recycled Books. And we'll announce the winner of the Business of the Year Saturday night. We'll also recognize a member of the Police Department, Santa Clara County Fire, all the local service groups. And much like the brilliant young people you just had in there, we'll be awarding our first three scholarships to three graduating seniors of the Campbell High School District in the name of Betty Deal, Sally Howe, and Mike Katuski. So the event is Saturday night. It starts at 6:30 at Orchard City Banquet Hall. Tickets are still available. But we will also be livestreaming the event on the Chamber and Foundation Facebook pages for someone, for anybody who can't get there in person and would like to watch the event. So thank you for the time and have a tremendous meeting.
Thank you, Ken. Any other, any other people wishing to speak?
Not under oral requests.
Okay. So then we'll move, move from that on to council announcements. Mayor announcement, City Hall is now open to the public for in-person services Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. For your convenience, online services such as permits, business license applications, and virtual appointments are still available online. Visit the city's website at campbellca.gov to view information for all city departments and services available. The city's clerk, the city clerk's office is accepting applications for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. To find out more about this committee or to apply, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-866-2117, or visit the city's website at campbellca.gov. The application deadline is Friday, April 8th at 5:00 p.m. Read Beyond the Beaten Path. Summer reading at the Campbell Express Library begins Wednesday, June 1st, and is free and open to all ages. You can register at the library or online at sccld.org. Public recreation swimming returns. Cool off this summer at the Campbell Community Center Pool with family and friends. Swim passes are available. For more information, please visit campbellca.gov. Registration for Campbell Recreation Preschool is available for everyone starting tomorrow, Wednesday, March 16th at 10:00 a.m. For more information about preschool programs, please visit campbellca.gov/preschool. And lastly, the Campbell Museum is hosting a second biennial juried art show to be on display at the Ainsley House July through the end of October. Guidelines for submissions can be found on the Campbell Museum's website at campbellmuseums.com. The deadline for submissions is Friday, April 15th. And for those who wonder about a juried art show, essentially means it's selected through a competitive process. So there will be a jury that selects the winners. Move on to consent calendar, which is items three through eight. Would anybody on the council staff or member of the public like to point item? Do we have any requests? Anybody here? Then how about a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar, items three through eight.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Bybee, second by Councilwoman Landry. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons?
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry?
I.
Councilmember Lopez?
I.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
I.
Mayor Resnikoff?
Hi. Thank you very much. Move to public hearings and introductions of ordinances. There are none. We go to new business, item nine, 2021 Housing Element Annual Progress Report. Our presenter will be Director Eastwood.
Good evening. So Stephen Morris is going to present this item. As he sets up, I just want to do a little framing. You'll notice the three business items you have tonight all have to come from community development, all have to do with housing. Just a little framing of three. They each stand by themselves. But of course, as you go through them, you might be informed on one and want to comment on the other. So I see a little bit of as a past, present, and future, at least on the first two items. The first item for this evening is more routine. You see this every year, required by state law to report on the status of Rahel Housing Element Implementation. And Stevens brought that report to you. And from here, we'll provide the state with any comments and changes requested by the council. Just to look ahead, and of course, we'll talk to this item. We'll get to it. The next item is, while that might be past and present, is more of future. So of course, we'll be talking about Campbell's Plan for Housing, our next wave of outreach and preparation of the housing elements. Of course, some of the information you, you observe and provide feedback on. Uh, of course, any information you, you observe and provide feedback on, on the first item will of course inform how we do Campbell's Plan for Housing. And then just the last thing to frame, uh, has, uh, and the council knows this more to do with just how we manage our housing program. Uh, a little different, but related, uh, as we build housing and they're deed restricted and they're below market rate housing units, of course, we have a program that manages those units, so. Anyways, before I get started, just wanted to connect for the audience, the dots, uh, for the council, I know, connect the dots. Each of these items stands in of themselves, but if you're having anything, thoughts as you go through this, oh, well, that'd be interesting to bring up for the next item. Uh, there are links between these. Uh, so with that, I'll go ahead and close up and hand it to Stephen to present item number nine.
Thank you, and, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor Resnikov and members of the city council. I just covered, uh, item number nine on tonight's agenda, um, is to prepare, is to present the city's two thousand twenty-one Housing Element Annual Progress Report. So in short, the city prepares once a year a report, um, on, which helps, uh, present on the progress on the city's housing element. Uh, and also serves to summarize unit production and progress on achieving various goals, strategies, and policies of the housing element. So to summarize, uh, two thousand twenty-one in a single slide, the city entitled seventeen new units, issued seventy building permits, and filed three new homes. Of the seventy issued building permits, which come towards satisfying the city's regional housing needs allocation, or RENA for short, two were very low income and sixty-eight were in above, uh, moderate income level. So as an update on the city's RENA's, uh, RENA progress over the eight-year reporting cycle, starting in two thousand fifteen and ending in two thousand twenty-three, the city was allocated nine hundred and thirty-three housing units across four distinct income levels, uh, which range from very low income to above moderate. As the city is one year away from completing the reporting cycle, eighty-seven percent of the units should have been realized at each income level. To date, the city has provided five percent of its very low income units, three percent of its low, and twelve percent of its moderate rate, uh, but has achieved a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-six percent of its above moderate or market rate obligation a year ahead of schedule. So in addition to reporting progress in the development of new housing units, the annual housing, uh, report also serves to capture the city's progress towards implementing policies, uh, programs and policies contained in the housing element. While most of the programs and policies are routine in nature, um, in two thousand twenty-one, staff highlighted the city's efforts to, um, working on effectively the, the housing element update and the, all the outreach we had done, uh, to try to participate, uh, bring, bring more members of the public, uh, into the process, postcards, workshops, and also working towards the identification of draft housing opportunity sites and densities, which would meet the city's regional housing needs allocation. Uh, we also have prepared the SB nine ordinance update, which, um, as it stands right now, we have an interim ordinance, which is prepared to comply with changes of state law, and as well as subdivision of single-family lots and two, which helps facilitate the subdivision of single-family lots and facilitates two-unit development. And, uh, in, we have also a policy which speaks to, uh, furthering fair housing practices, so last year we released a survey, uh, which included a questionnaire really soliciting public feedback on have there been any discriminatory, uh, discriminant, discriminatory practices or, um, difficulties that members of the community have faced in trying to find or identify housing, including rental units in the community? And we're going to be taking that feedback and, and using it towards development of new housing policies. So with that said, uh, staff is recommending that the city council receive, uh, public comment on this item tonight and adopt a resolution accepting the Housing Element Annual Progress Report and directing us, our staff to file the, the report with the required state agencies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Are there questions from council for staff?
Yeah, um, I'm not sure this directly relates, but if seventy new units have been permitted, is there a reason why those haven't been built yet? Are they recent permits?
Yes, so there's always going to be a little bit of a lag time between the issuance of a permit and the construction of it. So oftentimes, they, they carry over years, so some of those permits might have been issued towards the end of last year and not yet constructed.
It's nothing worth doing, holding anything up though, right? They, they have their plans approved.
Well, if they issued permits, they're in construction, oftentimes construction, it takes several months to complete a unit, there's grading activities, framing.
Oh, so they're already under construction?
Usually an issued permit is under construction, but not yet completed, correct?
Okay, thank you.
Would that include, Stephen, a project like Cressley?
Cressley actually is not yet issued, so they, they haven't issued permits for demolition of the existing, uh, structures out there, but that permit is still pending.
So they're entitled, but, and they have entitlement, but not a permit?
That's correct, so they'd be reflected in, in, in the projects which have been entitled with permits issued for the, the site masquerading, I believe, and demolition, but the building permit has not yet been issued.
But it all evens, uh, I, I, I underlined, it all evens out at the end because there are some from the last set, there are some they're going to move into the next eight years, but the beginning of this past eight years, there was something that came in from the prior one, right? So over time, you, you can't, you can't stop it anyway, but over time it tends to cancel each other out, I would think.
That's correct.
Okay.
I had exactly the same question. Is we approved that project, what, two thousand seventeen? I think, I think it was two thousand seventeen, and I, I think it's important for the public, and unfortunately, nothing get reflected on this, is we do approve projects, we don't delay projects. And we can't control the developer. We try and provide impetus for, to moving forward, I'm asking a question if I may, that the permits are good for one year. But in this case, they haven't gotten the, the permit, they've gotten the approval, right, the, the, um, uh, approval to do the project, but we have a one-year timeframe typically to try and keep things moving. So do we have anything applicable on this project to help keep it moving?
Yeah, I can offer two things on this particular permit. On, on one point, the developer had actually delayed the initial submittal of the building permit with the intention of waiting out statutes of limitation for legal challenge reasons. So it's not like this, the, so it's not, yeah, so I apologize. So the, the developer had been waiting out, uh, potential challenges to their, their environmental review of their, of their project before preparing plans for the building permit submission. There's not like, immediately, uh, there's always a tendency to believe that as soon as it goes through the entitlement process, the developer will immediately submit the very next day for a building permit. Well, that is sometimes the case on smaller permits, like single-family homes, larger development projects, developers sometimes do wait to do that initial submission. We just want to make it clear that we haven't necessarily had it for that whole period of time. And then secondly, some of these entitlements have come with a two-year vesting period. So I, I don't know what the particular, uh, conditions have been on the Cressley project, we might have conditioned it where they had to submit their building permit within two years as opposed to one. But yeah, the typical standard condition that we impose is a one-year submittal requirement, which they might have just barely satisfied. They might have just submitted it just before the one year and, and they're going through the plan check process now. And they're nearing, they're almost nearing the completion of that, I can tell you.
So, uh, and in the past, if the people haven't met, their projects haven't met the schedule, they have to come back in for approval to get another time extension. And that, those are in place specifically, at least my, my understanding is to get, keep projects moving. So, um, it's distressing that that project's been ha- and it hang around a long time prior due to other, um, issues. So that property has spent, since then vacant and empty and non-productive, and everybody's wondering why. It has nothing to do with the city, we did, we did everything we could to move that project, um, forward. So I just wanted to add that clarification, as stated as the mayor.
No, we've said here before, I just commented that the city entitles and doesn't build. And some, we've had projects held up because of recession, and then all of a sudden you have a lot of building or a pandemic, and then you maybe will have a lot of building or, and sometimes it is the, the individual project isn't funded properly, but we saw that in two thousand ten, twelve or so, and then all of a sudden the floodgates opened, so, um, I would, I would guess it's going to be similar.
I do have a few more questions. I beg your pardon, thank you. So, um, if I read the material, so Stephen, first of all, thank you, I thought the report was good, and I actually, a very good, and I actually followed it. You didn't have to print out the big sheets for me this year, so something was accomplished. There's nothing that I could figure out exactly where, um, we get BMR credit for ADUs being built, right? I didn't see anything in there that gave us credit for that. If I missed it.
Yeah, what I can offer on that is, um, his, yeah, the cities, cities can get credit for accessory drawing units at a below market rate, even when they're not deed restricted, when they do a market study, so they do an analysis, a local study of rates, and then they determine it. Now, when we prepared this particular year's APR, um, we had not yet conducted that study. Luckily, ABAG, uh, has recently conducted analysis of ADU affordability.
Exactly.
And has since, uh, that was actually just released here in March, so this month. And it concluded that in most jurisdictions, that there were certain assumptions that could come into play. Um, that was, uh, thirty percent very low income, thirty percent low income, well, I guess thirty percent moderate as well, and ten percent above moderate would be the breakdown. So we don't have to reflect it necessarily in this year's APR. We do have one more year left in the reporting cycle, so what we can do is, we can do kind of a comprehensive review of all of the ADU units, even going back prior years.
Yes, yeah.
To go get credit for all the way back to two thousand fifteen with those assumptions in play. And we can do that as part of next year's APR now that we have those numbers from ABAG.
Yeah, because I knew ABAG was doing that study, so I was wondering where we were coming from. So, um, my, my question is, um, when we're doing, submitting the housing element for review by HCD, is it helpful to have higher numbers reflected this year? Next year is too late. If we're submitting the HD, uh, HCD Housing Element this year, wouldn't it be better to include the numbers now to show that we haven't been sitting on our tushes and, and we've been doing things? I, 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 it's, it's a strategy I appreciate, but it seems to me it would be beneficial to, to maximize what we've accomplished.
Like Councilmember Gibbons, I'll be straight, can we give our director? I, I know, um, study was completed just recently. What we have is HCD has not yet opined if they've accepted the study. At the same time, ABAG has said, uh, kind of giving lines that if they haven't, um, opined, they're, they're willing to accept it. So I think we would want to check back to make sure the assumptions that Stephen broke down thirty percent are correct. Uh, if that is the case, um, then we're more than likely to wrap that in the report. We might have a timing issue, of course, as the reports do.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I would just encourage just taking a double look at that to see what's, um, reasonable. Going back a few years, uh, we talked about this a long time ago. Charmin Palms was converted and purchased by a nonprofit, and they were removed from low to low-low, and we got no credit for those at the time. And I know we tried, and I don't know that if it's in the two thousand fifteen time period, I've lost track of it. But is there anything that we might want to do to, to look back and get credit for things? Because I, I read in one of the, the items that you could get credit for conversions, which we couldn't before. You can get conversions from units from one category to another. So I just want to make sure we, we don't miss that opportunity. I, I mean, my feeling is, and my questions are based on fact, that I think Campbell is doing a lot better than what this report seems to provide. So I'm trying to ask questions that reflect making sure we take full advantage. So I would just, I, I sent you these in writing, so you can take a quick look. And I would, I just, the other comments I have are, um, that, um, there's a couple of, of single-line items in the comment column. And again, I don't, I would, if I was reviewing it, I, uh, my question is, is there any way that we could add a little more richness to the comments? So, um, for example, there was no mention of the contract negotiations with Timber Cove, the landlord. And again, I've lost track of that, was two thousand eighteen, nineteen, or twenty. But to me, that was a very significant effort to keep that, um, mobile home park, um, at a reasonable rate. Those kind of comments, um, that we could put in to make the detail show more of what we've been doing, kind of thing. So I, I sent you a bunch, a list of things that I think would, might be useful to take a look at.
Yeah, we, we can, so the, the point tonight is to get council's feedback, any comments, we can incorporate those in the report before we send, send it to the state.
Okay, so I don't need to read them all, they're just questions that they can be added in.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Seeing none. Um, do we have anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item? We have, we have, we have only one person in the chambers, Steve Saunders. I didn't have a card, but come, come on up, we'll do that first. You're known without a card.
It's okay. Steve Saunders, Campbell resident, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I don't get it. I look at these numbers and we've achieved at best twelve percent in these low, of these categories of what we're supposed to. Does this mean anything? I mean, this is a total failure from, I mean, I couldn't imagine taking results like this to anybody, but it's what we've got. Is there any kind of downside to it, or we just report bad results and we go on with our, our business? I just really don't understand what's supposed to be accomplished here. I mean, really, this, this, this looks bad and doesn't seem like there's a lot of excitement about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody else online that wants to speak?
No, not virtually.
On this one? Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing, bring it back for council discussion. Councilwoman Landry?
Um, yeah, uh, I think the, um, community can tell by, uh, the three of us that made question comments. We can entitle a project, we can encourage developers to build, but we can't build our housing. And yes, the numbers are low, uh, but that's why we've been asking questions about Cressley and ADUs and what else we could have to show in our numbers. So I think it's just important for everybody to understand, we don't build the housing, we can entitle it. Um, and like, uh, Stephen was saying about Cressley Homes, you know, we, that was two thousand seventeen, I want to say, that we approved it, and it's up to them of when they can build it. So yes, the numbers are low, unfortunately, um, but some of it's out of our control.
You know, and, and I'll just add one other thing that, that that's exactly right. I think that some of the new laws that we face are driven because we can't, it's very hard to force somebody to build low income, very low income, when the, when the dollars don't work, but if you can accelerate the process and reduce the cost of doing the project, that's the idea of doing more, more ministerial approvals and fast-track it and be able to build without public meetings and all that. That's all geared toward things like duplexes on single-family lots and things like that, that helps that. So some, some, it's a valid point, but some of the things, um, if, if people don't bring in projects and want to build to that level, we can't do much about it. We can, we can encourage them to do more below market with density bonuses and things like that. But that's, you know, fifteen percent, it doesn't, it doesn't reach the numbers we're talking about. But I think I just personally believe that's a big impetus behind the housing bills. It's, it's the fact that some cities don't do this well, some cities don't build at all. And then, and then, um, it's very tough to get people to build at the lower level, so that's some of the pushback from the state, whether we like the bills or not. Councilmember Gibbons, Judge Leno?
If I may, I will tag right on to what you're saying, uh, because it's, it's exactly what's happening. Um, and, uh, this is where the state is writing legislation that takes away local control because they feel local control is prohibiting projects. One can debate that, and I certainly have debated that, but, um, we don't build. So, um, density bonus, I'm, I'm, I won't swear I'm correct on this, but I think virtually every project that this, uh, city has approved in the last five, eight years of ten units or more, has had of inclusionary ordinance and density bonus, which provides more affordable housing. Problem is, density bonus overrides our, our, um, inclusionary ordinance. So if you get twenty percent for density bonus, it's inclusive of our fifteen percent, not additive. So the benefit that we get numerically is, the way the legislation is written is minuscule. So our hands are tied, that's the way the law is written. And in terms of penalties, we said we have the laws, but cycle six, which is the new RENA number, our old RENA number was nine ninety-three, it's now, um, three thousand, give or take. And the reason it went up so much is for the first time, when they came down with the, um, allocations, they added a penalty for the previous years that, that cities didn't meet. And I think Mountain View met their numbers, I don't know any other city anywhere else that met their numbers. Uh, and Mountain, uh, Mountain View met it because they have huge money from their Facebook and Google, um, businesses putting money into buy, buying housing. So, um, the reality of what the state's dealing with and understanding the on-the-ground situation that cities have just isn't there. And I think we've done a great job, and I know staff is struggling and council is struggling with this next phase of, of cycle six, and you'll hear more about that tonight on the, on the last item, of trying to find a way past these constraints. So, um, I just think we've So I just think we've done a remarkable amount of work. We've been very positive, we haven't turned down housing projects. We're, we're there to, to work to make things happen to the best of our abilities. So you're right, the numbers are embarrassing.
And I'll go to the second council member. I would add too, that we can debate the validity, the logic behind any of these bills. But the city manager and I were recently at a meeting of local mayors. And I could tell you of another city, mayor took pride and they haven't changed her population in two decades or more. And another one said, we're built out and other people should build for us. And we kind of came away saying, this is why there's SB nine. To our credit, we've, we've embraced SB nine, it doesn't mean we all like it, but we've embraced it and said, how do we live on it? There are a couple others that are, that are basically saying, we're not doing it. And, and I think they'll lose and they'll lose money on the way. But it's, in an absolute evaluation, it's not good. In a relative evaluation, reality, we've gotten a lot more done than most cities. That doesn't make it prettier for you, but it leaves a little explanation, I mean, we're trying. Councilmember Lopez, you've been waiting patiently, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I couldn't agree more with the gentleman who spoke, Mr. Saunders. And at the same time with, with everyone up here speaking, and so how do you reconcile that? The, you know, the, the fact is, I agree, these numbers are unacceptable. What I'm focused on is what we can do going forward. I, you know, I think this has been mentioned, some of the items here tonight are going to address that. And for, you know, for better or worse, there's legislation that is also trying to address these issues. I'm really excited by the, by what Campbell can do and the positive attitude, as has been mentioned, that, that we have in the community. So I'm excited on what we can do going forward, which, and, and as council member Gibbons also mentioned, this cycle does account for some of these numbers. You know, again, for better or worse, you can disagree, but it is partly in response to not just what Campbell, you know, what our numbers are, but regionally, statewide, what this process looks like is in response to the fact that frankly, a lot of cities have, have numbers that look like this or worse. So I'm focused on what we can do going forward and am looking forward to.
Appreciate it. Let me, let me, I would, I would add to that, I agree with you. I think I've not heard anybody up here be adamantly against housing. I think we could have a good debate on if we can identify places where we could pick six thousand units. Do we need to be doing that in single-family zoning? And that's an argument we could have, but other cities have said they won't build it at all, and that's why we're doing it in single-family zoning. And we, and we had to do it, but I mean, I think that's where we would have an interesting debate. But not because we don't want to build, because we actually have areas we've identified where we could build otherwise. But that's, that's the method of the state.
Right, and I just offer some history, which is Campbell, traditionally while we had redevelopment agencies, was obliged to spend twenty percent of the funding on housing. Unlike a lot of cities, Campbell spent twenty, every penny, year after year after year, spent every penny to meet the housing needs. And we have some significant projects at Avalon and elsewhere around the city, specifically because we did that. They were, and I mean that, there were thirty different housing programs that Campbell managed. Senior housing, cooperative housing, and I won't think of them all. We were considered the best city in the county until redevelopment agency shut us down. And we've always been pro-housing, we've always been pro-support of, of what's needed to, to address our community needs. So the loss of redevelopment agency is debated with great angst at ABAG and other meetings, because cities are saying, we can't do it. You took our funding mechanism away. And there's lots coming up, which will be challenging to see how it works to come up with that money again. But we've done it, we're committed to it, and I just, we'll, we'll do the best we can going forward.
Thank you, and to quantify it, you know, neighboring two cities that are comfortable not growing at all. In the last census, we grew four thousand people, which is about ten percent. So I mean, I think that's actually significant growth that others, that others are fighting. So any other comments by council or a motion to receive the comment? And adopt the, adopt the, accept the progress report?
I just wanted to
Oh, I'm sorry. Please.
And concur with my, my colleagues, and that the numbers are low, but it isn't for a lack of us, the city not trying to, to address housing and, and encourage housing. There are many things that are beyond our control. And as council member Gibbons said, that building permits, it's up to the, to the developer and then things happen that are, where the building permit is delayed. So we are pro-housing and we do have to do better. But, and hopefully in this next couple items, we'll come up with some ideas that will generate some ideas.
A teaser to stay around. Excellent.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, please.
Make a motion that the city council receive public comment and adopt a resolution accepting the housing element annual progress report and directing staff to file the annual progress report with the required state agencies.
I was liking. Motion by Councilwoman Landry, second by Councilmember Lopez, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Gibbons? Hi. Councilwoman Landry?
Hi.
Councilmember Lopez?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
Hi.
Mayor Resnickoff?
Hi, thank you very much. We move on to unfinished business, sticking with our housing theme tonight. It's item ten, update on Campbell's plan for housing. Our presenter is, looks like it was Director Reese, who he's pushed to you or Stephen?
Yes, no, I'll start. Thanks. Okay, continue theme from past present to the future. So, so this is to talk about Campbell's plan for housing, which the council is very familiar with and spent two, three months last fall identifying more than six thousand units, which we'll walk through, to your point on how we plan for housing in the future. Before I start, I did want to introduce our consultant team, that consists of Jeff Bradley, Sung Kwong, both are here. Jeff, you've seen before, so he's new to the team. Both will be assisting on presenting tonight, and of course, Stephen Rose is here also, who's helped manage the project. So I'll start with introduction. We do have a PowerPoint presentation on a few slides, and I'll hand it over to the end group team. Next slide. So it's mostly informational. You might remember when we started the housing element work, plan for housing back in October, we had a similar informational item just to lay, set the table on, on what to expect as we go through the next few months. We're at in schedule, things you'll discuss in your, in your upcoming meetings. So tonight isn't really digging deep into the policy sets and the merits of them and what to focus on. It's more of laying expectations on how we'll go, go forward and providing those to you, giving you some transparency on how we're going to do public outreach. And then again, any initial input you have on any of this, both are we contacting enough groups to get engaged with our stakeholders? If you have initial thoughts on housing policies and programs we should bring to you, we've tried to do a grab bag of every single housing policy and program we can think of that might be useful at Campbell. But mostly tonight is informational. So it's number one, to do a summary for you. I know there's some questions on where you landed in January in selecting those housing sites, the numbers, and we can walk you through that. Number two is mostly informational, what's the next steps in our EIR preparation? What's the next steps on coming back to you with the policy discussion? How do all those things intertwine on, on the schedules? How we're going to do outreach related to that? And then finally, we did run a form on some related things we're working on. Zoning arts update I've spoken about in a broader strategy session, we'll have some more information on that. And then something we're kind of excited about is teaming up with a university on doing some visioning planning in one, two parts of the city. Next slide. So with that, just mostly outline, this is what we'll go through tonight, next slide. With that, I'll go ahead and start to hand it off to the end group team, but I'll cover this one. So, so here's where we're at in the process. You'll remember this started back in September. We had combined the general plan and housing owner updates. You had reviewed the housing, the general plan in September. We dove deep into housing opportunity sites between October and January. The intent was to pick sites to go into the IR. And the IR process is starting, and we'll, we'll let you know what that schedule is. We can do in parallel, just to frame this, preparing the IR to look at the environmental impacts of those housing sites, which is a land use change. And then in parallel, we'll talk about just programs and policies that Campbell can do to help housing. So that's why those are happening in parallel, everything is very time sensitive. Wanted to have the housing opportunity sites done first. So we're in March of this year, and that's where we're at with the policies and preparing for the IR. Again, months ahead, we'll look at engaging you on those policy sets and getting the feedback. By the time we get to June, May, June, July, we're intending to publish the draft housing element. And I'll go out for public review and eventually HCD. And at the same time, we'll publish the draft EIR. And again, our target is the last bullet on the screen, which is by the end of this year, state mandated to have adopted a housing element. That is the goal that we're aiming towards and why everything is very time sensitive on bringing these items to you. So with that, I am going to go ahead and hand it off to Jeff Bradley. He's going to start by doing a little bit of recap. You'll remember back in January, you had selected those housing sites to go in the IR, and Jeff's going to provide an overview of that.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you, Mayor, members of council, it's great to be back. I want to do a quick check on, check in on sites. We were before you back in late January, we, we'd left the room with about fifty-six hundred, fifty-six hundred units on our sites. Based on council direction at that meeting, that number did creep up to the sixty-six forty-one that we're calculating now, which is a little different than what's in the staff report at sixty-six forty-four. And just wanted to provide some transparency and clarity about, about where those, where those additional units were coming from. There's really three major changes that resulted in that. That was the addition of the entire San Tomas property. Previously, we had just been including one small, one acre corner of the property. And there was some concern about, we had picked the wrong corner, it wasn't a great spot. It wasn't, it wasn't representing, you know, the, the vision for that corner. So in terms of environmental analysis and going forward, we just put in the whole property in order to have the council to have flexibility down the road to figure out what that area is going to look like in terms of housing and mixed use and supportive, supportive uses. And it's a, it's a fairly large property. So that generated over four hundred and fifty units over what was in our original number. Oh, thank you, Stephen. And then the next move was, there's a robust council discussion and direction to go ahead and include that really several blocks of property downtown, across from the train station, bounded by railway on the, on the west, Campbell Avenue on the north, Gilman on the east, and San Cava on the south. So it's really three, three blocks, three, three solid blocks of parcels that were at fairly high density. And again, that's adding nearly four hundred units. And again, this is from, this is from an environmental perspective. So the council and the planning commission can look at this, once we have all the environmental analysis in, and make judgment calls about which sites we'd want to keep in, which, which sites you'd want to remove. And it'd be considerable flexibility at that point, because we're, we are considerably over the baseline target. And then additionally, there were some smaller sites ranging in size from about fourteen to eighty-three units that in total picked up the two hundred and twenty-six units. And these were sites that we had strong property owner interest in, kind of at the, at the last minute, as people were becoming more aware of this process and starting to sort of self-nominate some properties to be evaluated as part of the housing element. And so that, that's, that explains roughly one thousand unit increase, basically in those three, those three categories. So the map itself doesn't, doesn't look radically different. All the additional sites we had discussed at the, at the council meeting, there was, there was one on Rincon. There was one on Hamilton, several on Campbell Avenue, and just in, in combination, it moved, it moved the needle a bit. And with that, I will turn it over to Sung to talk about the EIR schedule and the policy program. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and council. So I will go over the schedule and then transition over to outreach and then potential policy development. So in terms of the EIR, the EIR is going to address both the land use changes as part of the general plan and the housing opportunity sites, and that all can be wrapped together as part of the analysis. In terms of the timing, we're hoping to get an NOP out on March eighteenth, and then have a planning commission scoping session on April twelfth. And then we'll have a draft of the EIR out in the summer, and then have adoption hearings near the end of the year. In terms of outreach, we are going to continue with outreach. We've done a little bit already with the site analysis. But now that the outreach is going to focus more toward addressing what the needs are for special needs populations and policy development. So that's sort of the transition. We've already done outreach for site selection, we're kind of having more outreach to do, have more refinement with the policies. And we're going to talk through some of the potential policies later in the presentation. Once we're done with the outreach, we will come back to the planning commission and council a couple times. So the first time, we'll go through planning commission on April twelfth, and then council on the twentieth. And then we'll have a second round with planning commission on, on May fourth, and then May ninth. In terms of key milestones, what we're wanting to do is have a draft of the public review of the housing element on May twentieth. And that will be circulated for, for thirty days as part of HCD requirements. And then at the end of June, beginning of July, we would like to submit the housing element to HCD. And then they have ninety days. I'm hearing that HCD will be taking all of the ninety days. So we're hoping that we can get through that ninety day period, and it won't affect our timelines. And then in October, we'll go through planning commission and then go to city council in November, December, and then submit to HCD in January. And here is a Gantt chart showing the timeline. As you can see, the public review draft of the housing element will be out in May. And then in July, we'll have the HCD draft of the housing element available in July. And then at that same time, we'll, we'll circulate the draft EIR. And then in October and, and November, we'll start the adoption hearings. In terms of the outreach, we've met with some of the groups already, including affordable housing developers, Chamber of Commerce, market-grade housing developers and property owners. And then we're going to transition to meeting with community-based organizations. We're also going to meet with school districts and faith-based organization, organizations. This list here is really only a highlight, we have a longer list, if the council would like to see that as well, of all the nonprofit service providers that we'll be contacting. And then in terms of the policy development process, we've already started the review of the fifth cycle housing element. And we're going to look at the demographics and the data provided by MTC ABAG. And then we're going to wrap in all the feedback from the community and then from the meetings with planning commission and council. And then we'll develop policies and programs for the planning commission, the council to consider. So here is a highlight of potential policies for the council. These are the types of things that, that may come up when we provide more refined policies. But we just wanted to go over them with you. So there's five objectives. The first objective is to improve housing affordability. And ways we can do that is to have an affordable housing overlay. We can have ADU ordinance updates, the council, if the council so chooses, can develop an SB ten ordinance. Objective two is to preserve housing and affordable housing stock. So topics could include rent control, short-term vacation rental ordinance, housing rehab, loan programs. Objective three, to remove governmental constraints to housing. And that's, you know, municipal code changes, like modifying parking standards, streamlining department process, and so forth and so on. Objective four is about resilient housing, and that's really to address climate change and some of the environmental hazards and to address energy as well. And then objective five is to address affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is something that HCD highly emphasizes this cycle. And so as part of that, we, we will be integrating our outreach with the community-based organizations to get more feedback about topics related to large families, female-headed households, the homeless, persons with disabilities and seniors. And then we could also look at renter protections and other potential policy ideas. In addition to the housing element, uh, there may be some zoning ordinance changes, particularly to adopt the zoning districts to implement, uh, the housing opportunity sites and then potentially adopting objective design standards. And there may be some miscellaneous, um, updates to the zoning code as well. And there'll be a revised scope in April. Um, and then with that, I'll turn it over to Rob to talk about the San Luis Obispo Light Rail Station area planning.
Yeah, we just wanted to highlight as a related effort. So the council member in the housing opportunity sites, we did concentrate a lot of high-density housing around our three light rail stations, specifically Winchester, Hamilton on the, the sort of the fries elephant bar side, and then as Jeff highlighted around the railway site in downtown. Uh, so with that, there's a, a lot of known concepts for a long time. I'm doing stationary planning, transit-oriented development planning. And, uh, we wanted to have a concentrate effort on having some new kind of vision plans about how that housing would happen around those sites in the right way that's coordinated that, that sort of creates a space where you have housing, mixed use and, and, and a nice pedestrian or a mixed use area around those stations. So, uh, we went ahead and, uh, and we partnered with Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. Uh, they have a master's and undergrad program in urban planning. And, uh, they'll be coming up here as part of their curriculum, uh, to study those two stations, um, they're doing a site visit in early April. Uh, we're scheduling a final presentation for the plan commission in May. And again, just to generate some ideas, do community engagement, get some, um, kind of brainstorming ideas on what visions of those areas could look like. So we thought we saw as a good opportunity to partner with a nice educational institution. Um, not sure if they'll have the level of the STEM awards that you saw earlier, but, uh, have seen some bright and good work coming out of Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. So I'm looking forward to this partnership and some ideas that could be presented to Campbell. Uh, with that, I think, uh, we're at the end again. Today, today is mostly informational. If you have additional feedback, uh, specifically on, uh, are we engaging enough groups, more stakeholder engagement on service providers? Uh, any initial thoughts? If there's housing policy programs that we should put in the bucket to bring to you or other feedback, um, we'll go ahead and pause and, uh, staff is here to accept our answer questions in addition to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we'll open up the questions from council. Councilor, give, enjoy your light on first, I think.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know. I still had it on.
Okay.
You might.
That's okay. I'll, I'll try a few questions. Um, so thank you. Obviously the outline and the stages and the rationale behind the steps is extremely helpful. So thank you all for putting that together. And it needs to go on our calendars. So we know what was, that we're, uh, up against. So, um, I just double checking on the calendar. There's no council meeting in, at the end of June, June thirtieth. That's just a submittal date. The council meetings, um, are basically in April.
Correct. Yeah, the June date is strictly a semittal date.
Just a semittal. Okay. Thank you for that. You are doing the scope of the E I R and I've got a little nervous. Thank you very much for adding the information of how the number went from the fifty-five hundred to the sixty-six hundred because that freaked me out a little bit when I was reading the staff report. So, um, thank you for that information. So my question is council has said that we know we aren't going to go that high. There's been a pretty consistent comment that we aren't going to go that high. We weren't, we weren't comfortable going to the fifty-five hundred. When was that? So we know, I believe, people may challenge by my understanding of the discussion, that we're going to back it down and we know that the value of the E I R is to give us the biggest picture and the most options. So I'm still okay with that, but I do have some questions about some of the assumptions and some of the diagrams. Is this the time to ask it or should I do it during the discussion?
It's certainly questions and if it's clarifying questions, maybe that will help discussion. I, I would do it now.
So on the, um, diagram showing the map, uh, on the map. Uh, so I'm, uh, when you did the prune yard and you show a hundred and fifty, I, I wanted to make sure it was clear that you're talking two towers at seventy-five each. The hundred and fifty number struck me as potentially misleading, not intentional. I understand that you're looking at two projects there, but with a hundred and fifty number, it implies one, that's a hundred and fifty units an acre. So, um, I, you might find a way to clarify that.
I'd say staff and council's intent, uh, based on the diagrams and both the applicant interest was to do two sites separately, seventy-five units each and want to make sure, make sure the tools reflect that as we go forward.
Right. Thank you for that. Um, and then I didn't recall the church site at, uh, Lee and Hamilton being, uh, on the list. That struck me as, as, that's a, a church that they're remodel, remodeling, um, modernizing, doing a lot of. So that one just seems misplaced.
The, uh, i- it's been included. It's not a new site. Uh, uh, there's a lot of sites. I'll just recall, both Steve and I have talked to the property owners, uh, the, the church. They have established an interest in potentially doing housing and it has been included consistently as a site.
Oh, okay. Uh, I think there might be some miscommunication there, but, oh, okay. I know you've explained why you've got the numbers on the other sites. Okay. The other, the other, um, question I have on the map is maybe this isn't the right place to ask it. The most important thing, um, that we've, oh, the, the important thing we've talked about, um, before is the density bonus and it's at fifty percent now. So when you show seventy-five units an acre, you're talking a hundred and ten plus units an acre. And understanding the implications of that, how will the E I R address that? And how will the community understand what the E I R is, is doing because?
Yeah, I, well, I think there's layers to the answer. I think that the standard answer would be the E I R would not because Campbell's not planning for that level and density bonus preempts our local regulations. I may have to look further into case law if there's some evidence reasonably foreseeable that there could be higher development should we look at it. But, but at this point, my understanding is we would only look at the density we're planning for.
Okay. So I wa- I wanted to make sure council understood that because when it comes to making the decisions going forward, we, you are going to be asking us to look at the, look at the, the impact in the E I R for the numbers that are here. Okay. So that doesn't do that. And, um, and then on the map, thank you. That's, that's a big piece of information. Then on the map, and I think, uh, Mayor Resnikov wanted to have a section of Winchester, um, that little, um, uh, comma at the end of the, uh, Bud Safeway complex. That was where you wanted to have the, uh, automotive shops not included. Do you remember?
Actually a little further, further.
Further down.
Further down.
On the other side of Santa Mas.
That was taken out before.
I, I don't think so. No.
Oh, so you meant that. Okay. I thought you meant this one.
I think we took out a little further.
Yeah, it's down, it's on the other side of Santa.
I, I do know where you're talking about. I thought you were asking this one. Okay. And if you need special needs contacts, I'm sure some of us have those if you need those. And okay. All right. I'll let it go for now.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Landry.
Yeah, um, I didn't quite understand what you said about the hundred and fifty on top of the prune yard and the sixty. Is that how many units they put? Because we're not planning on putting them within the whole part of prune yard. I thought it was just the back part.
Yeah, we, this is a situation where we're still developing the tools to, to implement this, right? So we have an intent from the property owner and staff recommendation and council direction to have two sites on the prune yard at seventy-five units each. That's the one fifty. There's a separate parcel, there's set different parcels out there. And so that's one parcel that has the, the, the purple on it. The separate parcel, it was staff's intent to have the corner include where the Bank of America is, um, right on that corner, uh, which would be the, the, the northwest corner of Hamilton and Campbell. And to have sixty units there. Now again, the, usually when you designate housing sites, you designate the whole parcel. So this is the reason why Stephen and the maps, we have, we've hatched it. And again, our intent is just to include a portion of that site. We're still refining the tool to make sure at the end of the day, um, it's memorialized either in zoning and further actions that the intent is really just in totality, the sixty, seventy-five, seventy-five and then those locations. So we're still refining that.
Okay. And I thought we took the first street garage and the service yard off of the list of properties.
Uh, there was a lot of discussion from council on this. I, where we landed, um, was, I, I, I think there was some skepticism among some council members on this, but there was enough intent just to keep going and put in the I R and come back to a final decision on this, on those two sites.
Like I, if I can comment on that, I can specifically say we didn't because I remember saying when we were at five thousand and people thought five thousand is too high. Well, if we remove technology park and two city sites, that took us down eight hundred units. So we had them in there. We said those three alone, if they come out, and there was some interest in taking some out. If they come out, we were down to forty-four hundred or something like that, forty-eight hundred. So I, I re- I do remember for sure they were left in.
Okay.
Subject to the I R and subject to discussion.
Okay. And then, um, the reason you're putting the numbers on the prune yard versus something like over at the tech park is just to say within that parcel, there would only be a hundred and fifty. Right? Because you don't have a number on the tech park.
That's correct. So that little crosshairs scene reflected is a site-specific overlay. So the idea being we would apply the land use designation to that entire parcel. It would restrict the maximum number of units which could result from that to a hundred and fifty or sixty on the corner. This, again, we, it, the, the reason why this kind of came up before, if you may recall, we were drawing these kind of arbitrary polygons on these lots. It kind of came up a little bit more specifically on the, uh, the Santa Mas Aquino Plaza Shopping Center. We started getting into almost like the site design, like where should that building be? So we're trying to get away from that concept that we were going to allow the developer to decide exactly where and how it would build. But we wanted to maintain the council's intent on say a site like the prune yard over here. Understanding we don't want the whole prune yard to redevelop as a housing site. We want the prune yard to be there and understanding that those two buildings that Ellis Partners was proposing would be adding up to that a hundred and fifty.
I just for clarification. And then, um, regarding public outreach, um, I know our paper for, I think I said this right, Bill adjudication. Is that the right way to say we're the metro, um, because the Campbell Express went out of business, but we have the Campbell Press. And I would encourage staff to put an article that, uh, Sergio said it comes out on, uh, April fifth. So now would be the time to contact them and whether we pay to have an ad in there. But it's been a tremendous success and every, seems like everybody in Campbell's reading it. So I strongly encourage uh, the city to try to put an article or ad in that about the scoping meeting.
Could I ask a clarification of what she just asked? So I didn't understand why you didn't stripe the Santa Mas site. That was your question, right? You were explaining why the Santa Mas Aquino site, what didn't get striped, something about the whole thing?
No, the, what, originally we had talked about like just the back half of the parcel.
Right.
And just like the prune yard, they're showing the whole parcel. The Santa Mas Aquino is they're showing the whole parcel now instead of breaking out and only showing half a parcel. But we left that in as a part.
I'm fine with that, but I, I don't understand why they, why there's the, the, the striping.
I think that was a question about more about the prune yard than.
Yeah, that was my prune yard questions about the striping, not the Santa.
So we're not using the whole site at the prune yard and we know we're not using the whole site at Santa Mas Aquino. So why isn't it striped?
Well, yeah, so to clarify, these two sites, the prune yard sites as well as that, uh, church at, uh, on, on Lee Avenue and Hamilton and even the, the back of the Coles parking lot. Those would all be, it's kind of getting at the concept of the partial development potential. Now, the, uh, Santa Mas Aquino Plaza Shopping Center was not restricted in that manner. The way we had advanced, we actually had heard from the developer that they really wanted to build to the maximum potential of that full density. So we hadn't limited it in that same way. But they, they were actually planning and working with, uh, their tenants to actually redevelop the entire site in phases. They'd spoken at the meeting. They'd said that they were planning on removing existing buildings and building substantially new housing on the site. So that's why it doesn't have a restrictive number.
Thank you for that. I did not understand it. Thank you.
Uh, so let, let me ask, uh, there's only a little chair. Let me ask, um, so the four fifty-seven that we added into Santa Ma Center, does that infer it was about a one fifty before? Is that what the number was roughly? Six, six zero? Because that wasn't that about a quarter of it though, or it was not quite a quarter? One acre. Okay. And that was, and that was what seven acre? I don't, I just don't remember Jeff.
Sorry, I'm breaking the rules about speaking out from the audience. Jeff Bradley and group, uh, Santa Mas Center is about nine acres.
Oh, so that was one acre out of nine.
And it had, we had a one acre carve out.
Okay.
Previously.
Okay. So I, so I mean, basically I know we heard from the, from the owner that said I'd like to do more. But even if we wanted to keep it at one acre, there was a feeling we don't know which, where it would be. So you have to be able to test everywhere and, and the neighbors should understand that doesn't mean that we want to go from sixty to four fifty. But, but even if we stayed at sixty, we're not convinced. We know where the sixty should be. Therefore you would, you look at all four fifty and say, well, where's the sixty? It could be more, but not necessarily.
Does that, does that mean it should have the striping hatch across it? I think that's what Liz was asking.
I think, I think.
For the same reason the prune yard is.
I thought the difference to me of the two was that we don't know where on the Santa Mas Center, sixty units or eighty or a hundred would go. But if I go over to prune yard, I've got, I've got a site there for the office building and I've got maybe the site there with B O A. That's it. That's the only place it can go. So you can limit the prune yard where limiting the center might have us focusing on the wrong spot. Is it, prune yard is going to be those two sites or nothing. Whereas, whereas the nine acres could be any portion, any, any portion located anywhere on that nine acre.
But the, I guess the, the, the mapping graphic to me is inconsistent and someone who draws map for a living, this is to, what is inconsistent. The prune yard, you're saying it's only the Bank of America corner, but you got the whole parcel designated and you have a number on top of it. The two, uh, the one fifty for the back of the prune yard is its entire parcel, but there would only be two building sites. So if you're going to do that logic, you would go to the Santa Mas Center project and have a ha- a diagonal overlay. Uh, Liz is shaking her head to agree. Uh, it just seems like you should have a diagonal overlay on top of that because we never discussed the whole parcel. We discussed part of the parcel.
We did, but I think the question was we, what came up is, is the corner, we pick the right corner? Right, right.
So.
I'm just trying to look for consistency.
So I'll answer. Uh, so with, um, so there's two approaches here. Uh, if it's not hatched, uh, you take the whole parcel and assign a density. We do have some reduction requirements we have to do. We talked to you early on. Because usually you can't build wall to wall. That's a separate discussion. So most of the sites you see, assume a parcel comes in, it's redeveloped, like the Llewellyn site would come in, it's redeveloped the whole parcel. Or potentially in the future, the, the Campbell Technology Park in, in aggregate. Uh, so that's one bucket. Separate, a very small bucket is a few hatch sites where there was just a, an intent, both from the property owner, staff and council to say, hey, example, the prune yard, um, we don't want to give the intent, you're going to redevelop the entire site. We want to be very surgical. Very first surgical and putting where it's going to happen on the site. So those are the hatch sites. On the San Tomas, um, Aquino Plaza, I'm sorry, still a little new here. Uh, there was originally, uh, originally an intent to be more surgical to have it. And the council might remember it was in the back and it was closer to the residence and, and there was some council feedback that didn't really work and there was some resident interface. Subsequently, the property owner developer came in and said, well, you know, actually holistically, we would like to redevelop the entire center. Uh, they put that in the record and told us. So there was no intent to be surgical about it. Um, I, I think I've heard that they want to keep the uses there, want to keep it mixed use, but there is not an intent to be surgical at all at the San Tomas Aquino property. They want to include the entire site.
Um, one more question I have, and if I don't see any other question, we'll go to public comment on this. Um, if I can maybe ask Jeff another question, because this came from your presentation. You mentioned three hundred and sixty-two units that were the Sam Cava, Gilman and Railway. Could you just repeat? I, I, I missed where that all came from. It's a big number for that area.
Stephen, can you show that map again? I, I overstated a little bit because, um, you can see here in green is the parcels we added based on, uh, the council discussion and direction. The, the areas in white that are not included are simply, uh, the Crestley project that was discussed earlier is that up at the top. Uh, there's a twenty-unit townhouse project down at the.
There's a twenty-unit townhouse project down at the, at the corner of Gilman and Sam Cava that's been there for at least twenty years. And then there's the park itself. So with the exception of those three land uses, everything else in that quadrant is included. And there's a lot of small parcels in there, but when you add them all together, it gets, it gets, it adds up.
Okay, that's it, that's, okay, that, so it's that area behind Crestley in a way, but it's, but it's a lot of small individually owned parcels, which would make this very tough to do, but it's conceptual, conceptually, you're adding it up to this number. It may not be feasible to do it.
Correct. And the reason that the number I identified is it's lower than the, what the total you see there visually because we, we, we're already picking up a row of parcels along Gilman that's fronting on the park and the Creek Trail, which is some of it, most of it is under common ownership. So those, those ones were already in the, in the inventory and then we simply added the ones behind it.
Okay. Thank you. We'll see the other lights. We can, let's see, move to, is there anybody in the public wishing to speak on this? Let me see, let's go back to my.
Yes, I had one person who signed up in advance, but I don't see her online, Kalisha Webster. I don't see her online with us, so.
I see a couple of hands on that, except for this item. I see one hand now. And now I see three. Thank you, jumping. Okay, is there a particular order here?
No, the hands will move as they pop in, so.
So we'll just go in order from.
Go in order, yeah.
Julius, did you want to speak on this one? That should be next item, correct? I see your hand up though, but, okay. Rajah? Can you hear us? There you are, you're on mute.
Yeah, can you folks hear me?
A little louder, please.
Can you folks hear me?
Really low though.
How what now? Can you hear me?
Well, it's low, but I think we can hear you.
Okay, hey, Rajah Palila, one two one six West Hacienda Avenue.
We're having trouble up here. I don't know how to get it louder. Can you lean in really close, please?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Okay, Rajah Palila, one two one six West Hacienda Avenue. Quickly, thanks for staff for all the work that was put in. Quick comments, I was disappointed to see the sites disappear from the south of Winchester. If you look at the map that the staff was sharing, like, I don't know, there is not much anywhere in the south side of the Campbell. So I don't know what's the reason, but there is not much spaces that are marked and the spots that were marked were also gone, especially along the Winchester Avenue. I know one of the council members was like, okay, I want Scotty's to be there or whatever that was, so. I mean, that area needs housing. It's like an exclusive block that was put out. It has that Santa Tomas neighborhood plan with so much restrictive thing to even do a remodel or something like that. So something needs to be done even for that area to be included as part of the housing element process. That, that's all my comment is.
Thank you very much, Rajah. And Mark Field?
Hello, this is Mark Field, Campbell resident. I was wondering if staff could give us an idea of the number of stories that were of a typical building that will be put in at seventy-five units per gross acre?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I'm responding to council. So the question is typical building type that would be at seventy-five ground units per acre. We had presented a few graphics, you'll remember, back in the earlier meetings. Typically, those are stacked flat buildings. Campbell has a maximum height of seventy-five feet. I'd say generally with the mixed use, you have a ground floor retail of fifteen feet. And then on top of that, you have at least three to four stories of residences. That's typically what we expect.
Okay, thank you. Sarah Chafin?
Hi, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm not sure, is this the appropriate time to maybe give some suggestions about affordable housing, possible incentives to help with that process?
Sure, certainly, go ahead.
Okay, well, I was thinking that possibly one of the barriers to developing affordable and missing middle housing are the fees. So I was thinking that there could be some kind of pilot program to have some of the city fees be due when certificate of occupancy was issued. I was also thinking that it would be really important to somehow empower Director Eastwood to have more discretion if he was going to work collaboratively with property owners and affordable housing developers and missing middle housing developers. So some kind of maybe special program where he could somehow work collaboratively and try to maybe do a case study of trying to overcome barriers so that this type of housing could be built. And then the other thing that I was potentially thinking about is along the line of fees, maybe having a different fee schedule for for-profit development and for nonprofit or missing middle development. So anyway, thank you for your time. And I also wanted to make sure that I was somehow included on the list for the community meeting on March twenty-fourth and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce Bowen?
Yes, hello, this is Bruce Bowen. Hello, Mayor and council members. I have one comment and one question. Just to add to the mix, you know, once you get over sixty feet in construction height, the, the cost jumps significantly. So, you know, when we're doing projects, we're, we're trying to keep them under sixty feet, not the seventy-five. And the other question I had though is on the Gilman side. I see that those are listed as commercial corridor mixed use up to sixty units. Even though they're very, very close to the railway station, while other properties like the Corporate Yard are being listed as transit oriented up to seventy-five units. And I just wondered what the thinking was on that.
Okay, thank you. Can we get a response to this question?
Yeah, I didn't catch the first question, but on the second, I just wanted to clarify on our staff. They call this is the railway sites and the intended density. Did I catch that right? Okay. So I'm going to ask Jeff to elaborate a bit more. My recollection was those were, they were late ads. They were added at the late January meeting. Number one, they weren't originally included. Number two, they are small parcels. So it's been our tougher to, the council might acknowledge they've been into housing elements so far, all those sites, they haven't developed. And so sort of the recognition is they are smaller sites and more difficult to develop. But I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jeff if you have additional insight on the sixteen units per acre.
Just if I can, just a moment of clarity in the process. I would suggest we finish public comment first and then if there's answers to the questions.
Fair enough, and I think that's, fair enough.
It sounds like we're almost there.
I think that's the last question, actually. So let me do that, let me close, let me close it to the public and then bring it back. And now, now I'll have Jeff step back up. Just let him get more steps in today.
Thank you. Sorry I'm rusty at these in-person meetings. This really goes back to the concept of some of the themes we had developed that may have received more discussion at the planning commission. But when we first started, Director Eastwood suggested, you know, rather than just thinking of all these sites in isolation and focusing on this parcel and then that parcel, you know, think of it thematically. And so we had, we had themes built around commercial corridors, about revitalizing shopping centers, making use of underutilized parking lots. And so when we were looking at the densities for this area, it was literally the downtown theme was kind of, and the transit oriented theme was sort of colliding with the commercial corridor theme. If you look at the map, we have sixty units per acre on Bascom. We have sixty units per acre on Campbell Avenue with the exception of those two parcels at the Prune Yard that have been discussed this evening. And then going further down Campbell Avenue, the sites north of Gilman, what I'm going to call Gilman Dillon area, there was real focused discussion around those, those orange colored sites there. Originally, we had those at seventy-five units per acre because of the proximity to not one, but two light rail stations, Hamilton and downtown. Both the planning commission and the council raised concern about the size of the parcels in relation to the, the neighborhood directly behind it. Not a lot of depth and room to get really fancy with, with step backs and buffers and landscape screening between the, the smaller homes and the larger new mixed use buildings envisioned. And so when we looked across the street, we saw what was happening with Crestley. Fairly large lot, actually, for that area, but with quite a bit of building going up at the existing standards. Possibly with a density bonus as well, if that's accurate. And so we, once the decision had been made on the, on the north side of the street, that informed what we thought the target density should be on, on the south side of the street with somewhat of a similar characteristic with even, even smaller parcels. We don't have the adjacency with close in, smaller homes. But, but thinking of the street as the, as the corridor, trying to create a consistent environment and then bringing that back down on closer into the, the, the station. That's where we landed on the density recommendation.
Thank you. So we're going back to council now for comments and any other feedback. I don't think this requires a motion because it's to receive the report. So, but if there's comments to give the staff feedback and all that, Councilmember Gibbons?
Yes, may we leave that diagram up, please? And what I wanted to comment on is, is an assumption in the, in the legend that, I'm oversimplifying, the vast majority are all mixed use. And council has had discussion that we don't want to go all mixed use everywhere. We want information about what's going where. So again, as long as it's clear that that is informational and a little bit of a challenge because mixed use will change the E I R dynamic. So I'm a little nervous that it's universally mixed use. But wanted to clarify, it's my understanding that council has not said that uniform mixed use graphic. So that's my first comment. The, and I will simply say for myself and I think other council members, when you do the calculation for the height that was asked, if you do the seventy-five foot at a thousand square feet a unit at fifty percent of lot coverage, with a mixed, with mixed use, it is seventy-five feet. So anything that goes higher than that, the density bonus, which I appreciate we aren't discussing at this point, would go eighty-five or ninety-five feet. So it's not a minor issue, but everything that's at seventy-five feet, we should, with mixed use, assume it's going to be seventy-five feet tall. And then on the Campbell Ave, you were just talking about opposite Crestley. One of the things that we talked about there years ago is that the south side where Crestley is, doesn't show, cast a shadow line and doesn't impact the space around it. Whereas on the north side, the height would directly impact the historic residential neighborhood that's there and the single family residences that are there. So I'm still a little challenged, just for the record, I'm a little challenged by that number there. I understand why you've done it and I appreciate the analysis. I think that was nicely said. Thank you. Also on the analysis of the Dillon and Gilman area, the little parcels, the reason that I think I would like to revisit, we thought it was okay to include those, even though they're small parcels, is because it's exactly what happened with the railway project where one developer came in and bought all nine lots without the city knowing peep. And then he presented the solution to the city. So it's very doable. And given the learning experience of increased density, property owners are more inclined now to be open to selling and combining. So I think that to me made a lot of sense and I would support that as well. I'm not sure the call was the difference between the seventy-five feet. Can you slide that to show the courtyard as well, please? Okay, so the courtyard is at, at, is it seventy-five feet? The courtyard's at seventy-five feet, transit oriented. And then the question was, why isn't the other area the same? So I think that is worth looking at. I thought that that was a legitimate question, particularly since one parcel is fairly well-owned kind of thing. And then my other question is, and I, I don't honestly remember and I didn't go back and look at previous. Why do we, one of the things council said early on back in September and again in January is we know we want to provide housing and we know it, there are things we're going to have to do to make it enticing to develop housing and enticing to develop affordable housing. That's the reality we have to accept. But we also talked about the character of the community and wanting to protect that. And we talked about the downtown as being central to what the community identifies as the core of Campbell and part of what makes Campbell Campbell. So I don't understand where that parcel came up. I don't remember it being asked before. That's at between Third and Fourth Street on the north side of Campbell Ave. So I question what's going on there. Okay, and you're going to be making, I just wanted to clarify to you on the scoping of the E I R and the production of the, of the housing element. Are you going to be following the existing status, format of the report, housing element, which is the policies and goals, policies and strategies? Is that what you're, how you're going to be presenting it? You said you're referring to the, you've attached the existing and you're referring to the existing housing element. Is that the format that we're going to move forward with?
To clarify, so this is the upcoming discussion with council on the policies and programs that go, the format? Yeah, I mean, the analytical process we'll take is the one some showed on the screen where we would first evaluate existing housing element, what's working, what's not. Deep dive into demographics, what are our special needs of our community and where are we kind of missing, hitting the mark? And then based on the number of policies and programs that could address that, we're going to bring some recommendations to you.
Okay, because I think that, that will make a difference. And you also have said in an answer to me previously on a question that the house, the other elements done in the draft general plan were done four and five years ago and they will have to be modified. Particularly the circulation elements and some of the infrastructure will have to be modified to meet these new numbers. So the implications go beyond and that's why the E I R scoping document needs to be carefully thought out. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Nothing, we're low-key had your light on earlier.
Yeah, thank you. Just some feedback. I want to start by, once again, congratulating and thanking staff for their progress today. We gave you some very challenging benchmarks and challenging timeline to me and thus far you've met those, those benchmarks. And, and when I go and speak to other cities or experts and, you know, we're looking at what the region's doing in housing, you know, I hear the feedback. I don't know other communities that are doing the kind of public outreach process to property owners that Campbell is doing. So I think we're going to be proud of that. My, my comments are fairly minor and just more for my own knowledge. I would be, as one of the presenters mentioned, I would be interested in looking at the longer list of outreach organizations and just anyone else. And 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 that would have been helpful to have maybe as an addendum to the report and and some of the the information that was in the staff presentation, but but I'd love to see that. Really excited that we're going to have participation from Cal Poly. It's exactly the kind of innovation and creativity that I want to see us doing and taking advantage of some of these great resources that that are there regionally, that that we're really lucky. And and finally, I I would like, as we move through the process and and discuss some of these further ideas that have been brought up. Excuse me, I I think the, some of the commenters tonight did have some great ideas to look at, for example, on affordability. So to the extent that we can, which I think we've done, but continue reaching out to the community and tapping into those ideas and involving them in the process. I I think that would be positive, but thank you for the presentation and update tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. Can you bring the map up again, please? I want to go back to the comment that Councilwoman Gibbons made about zooming on the legend for me, please. Okay, so purple is transit-oriented, mixed use. But we talked about that not all of those are going to be mixed use, like specifically if we say we went into the courtyard, there would be no reason to have commercial or anything down below there. But the, now zoom back out, please. So I'm looking at the green, at the Gilman. Why would that not be purple? I think that was your question earlier, wasn't it? So shouldn't that be purple?
So I'll start on the mixed use question. We we did run a bit out of time on settling the mixed use discussion. We had an opening discussion on the principles and policies that we should that we should consider in council, give broad direction, but we're sort of running out of time on settling that. So staff took an expansive approach of assuming a lot of the sites mixed use to start, to get the environmental clearance. We want to frame this in a way that you do have options to narrow that. And there'll be two questions with mixed use. One, is it allowed? And then two, is it mandatory? And of course, you can come back to those questions, but in order to keep things moving, because we have a very tight timeline, just to to keep things moving into the IR, we were a bit more expansive, except where the suicide, a few sites where it was obvious, like the Laurel and site and a few others, to include most of the sites on mixed use, but you will be able to come back to that at the end of this process. To the Gilman question.
Shouldn't that be transit-oriented? That, I think that was one of the speaker's questions.
I I think Jeff Bradley had answered that question before. This is the the railway sites.
The Gilman and the Dillon, the ones that are green.
Yeah, I can offer, so the original staff, so going into the January twenty-fifth council meeting, staff staff had presented, I believe six parcels here on Gilman, the kind of this run of the northerly reach on Gilman. And that was coming in at the seventy-five units per acre standard. Now, we, as part of our methodology, we're also talking about established neighborhoods. We heard from councilmember Gibbons, like north of Page, and there's established neighborhoods, you see the north, similar here. You have the Madison Project, which are these kind of lower-density townhomes. You have that project that that Jeff Bradley had mentioned. These are also established townhomes. So the directions which we've taken from the council was to lower the density of these sites on Gilman, but to also then from seventy-five to sixty, but to also pick up the additional properties on Dillon and Railway, which had been included in prior, in the, I think, the Rena five and four cycles previously. So that's what the map is really reflecting, is reflecting the council's feedback in response to the the surrounding neighborhood context, that's something that was important to the council to consider.
Okay, so I I'm I'm going back to the kind of the clarity of the map. When you say transit-oriented, to me, those parcels right there stand out as transit-oriented. So whether it's the height that makes the color difference, but the title, the only one is purple that says transit-oriented. And so, and I think that's one of the speakers said, why is that not transit-oriented? It's right there.
Yeah, absolutely.
So maybe it's a clarification in the legend.
And if I may.
Title, transit-oriented, to me, it could be the transit-oriented up to sixty or transit-oriented up to seventy-five. But I think it would be easier for people to understand, because I'm sitting here a little confused of why is it not the labeled transit-oriented?
Yeah, and then a a lot of those conversations which we had intended to have about future land use designations and mixed use and whether or not to our director's point previously, the two-pronged and mandatory, non-mandatory. What we're doing here is we're just coming up with rough initial land use designation names. These are also subject to change, so we just want to effectively place holders for, just for discussion purposes as we advance through this process. So what we were trying to capture for the purposes of the NOP and environmental was the maximum, say, density and land use capacity that these sites could have, so that we'd be studying those sites and land use designations appropriately. So we could very well land on some of these names, but they're still tentative at this time.
Okay, so I would just make the suggestion that maybe there's a category in between commercial corridor mixed use and transit-oriented, and now another one that's transit-oriented up to sixty units. And then I'm not sure how that affects kind of the EIR, just wording-wise and what people are going to understand. Like I look at that corner and going, that's train, that's the stations right there. So just my comment on that. I do appreciate all the work that you guys have done. This is a lot putting it together. I mean, this is what, three hundred and seventy-one page packet here? A lot of numbers, a lot of good charts, a lot of good summary of what's going on. And I think this map does reflect, other than I didn't think we kept the First Street Garage and the courtyard in there. But I do think this is reflects what we talked about. And it does get us to that high number, which we all agree is not what we're going to build to, the six thousand six hundred and forty-four. But it helps us in the EIR and then paring it back down from there.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Bobby?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank staff for the report. It's a a good report, very comprehensive. And I know it's, you're under a time constraint, and I really appreciate that the ball keeps rolling forward. I do have one general comment about the stakeholder service provider list and one agency that I didn't see listed in there, which I really feel is important and should be, is the office of supporting, the county's Office of Supportive Supportive Housing. And I'd like to see that added to the to the list.
Thank you. And just my comments, thank you for the report, especially when you have every item tonight. So you probably strained a little bit on resources. I'll just comment that I'm fine with the way you've listed the mixed use. And and I like when you said allow or mandatory, it's a big difference, so we can get there later on. But I'd rather err on the side of having that option and not losing a base of business and then deciding later on we may not want it, than to proceed where we're outlawing it or not authorizing it. So I'm appreciative of what you did there. Any other comments for staff? Because otherwise, we just received the report. We don't need a motion. I think we're good. So we'll receive the report on the policies and programs and move on to, thank you, move on to item eleven, review of the city's below-market rate housing program identified improvement plan. Our presenter is?
I will once again start and then head over to our capable senior planner, Stephen Rose, and we have consultant support also on this. So this is the the trifecta of the last third. The pivot here is, of course, to Campbell's existing housing program, how we manage our below-market rate units. I wanted to frame this a little bit. This is in the report. But staff is taking two approaches to this. One is the bulk of the presentation you'll see tonight is our existing program today, how it's managed, identified issues, some recommendation plan on how to change those. On how, on the size of the program to get it today and its its overall structure and its its policies and standards. And then broadly, speaking to your last item, we we are set to plan to meet our Rena numbers, which at minimum would be three thousand housing units, of which roughly half will be below-market rate units. And so today, the the program has about, I think it's a hundred thirty, a hundred fifty units. If Campbell is successful, the the program would grow to over sixteen hundred units, if you get the math right. So my professional observation is Campbell is in a way right now ready to handle management of over sixteen hundred BMR units. In our mid-year budget adjustment, when we came to you, one of the items we had was a request to have an outside housing kind of program expert come in and just advise the city on how to grow the program, make it much more financially sustainable, make it more administratively sustainable, to get ready for that growth in the program. And so we are starting that effort. We're preparing RFP, going to go out and ask an outside expert just to come in and just help us get to the program to its state where it can grow, expand, and just be much more resilient and sustainable at that level. So there's two approaches overall to this. One, the bulk of tonight is just focusing on today's program, where it's at today, recommended fixes. I I framed this sort of short term. But I did also want the council to know that we wanted to take, in addition to that, a holistic, broader approach to look now at the future of above and beyond these recommended fixes, how to to grow the program and create just a better program in Campbell to manage our housing units. So it's sort of a two-layered approach, and you might see in some of the recommendations, a reference to that broader, more expansive look that will be coming to you later. So with that, I'll hand it over to Stephen for the presentation.
So also, joining us tonight is Julius Nanda. He's the CEO and of House Keys, who's the city's below-market rate housing administrator. So I'll do a quick presentation, well, hopefully quick, it's a few number of slides here, getting through all the different components of our housing program. And yes, to our director's point, there are some parts of this presentation that we're focusing right now on some of the short-term fixes. But there is going to be that broader study of our program and identification of a maybe a little bit more fiscally sustainable business model, which we could prop up to help plan for this future growth of the community and and our program at large. So first, a little bit of background. So our, the city's housing program is, the city has a general plan policy, which is to foster adequate housing, and that's for pretty much all groups of our community, including low-income households. It's in deference of state law and consistent with housing element policy as well. At this, as of today, the city has two hundred and seventeen units in the program. They consist of a combination of owner rental and units which have loans. And to help us administer the program, the city council hired, authorized House Keys to serve as the city's below-market rate administrator in twenty sixteen. And last year, it marked the city's fifth year of partnership with House Keys. And in response to staff, we were recommend, we had recommended the council that we hold a program improvement meeting to, as pretty much with the administration of any program, we should be checking in routinely to make sure that the execution of a program is consistent with our our program's goals and objectives. And being five years, we figured now would be a good time as any. So the purpose of tonight's item, again, it's to routinely evaluate the goals and outcomes of our program, but it's also to evaluate, observe challenges and identify solutions, which we have observed with staff. And then also, as previously stated, some of these issues are going to require that long-term solution, which we talked about. So the first section, which we dedicated to is just the program administration at large. So our particular program, we we have a consultant service agreement with House Keys. And within it, there are two items. There's an exhibit A, which reflects the scope of services which are provided by House Keys as our below-market rate housing administrator. And there's a second part, which is about the fee schedule. But in the scope of services, it would be our intention when we do come back to the council with the contract, which will be sometime in June, we're hoping, maybe earlier, that we use that as an opportunity to identify a number of routine items which are in the program that aren't really currently addressed, like staff reports and specific dates and deadlines, which we'd like to have more specifically called out. That way we can clarify how and when those would be done. And separately, there's a lot of the the performance measures which are included in the consultant scope of services are not really independently verifiable by staff. And what I mean by that is we require House Keys to save respond to emails or inquiries, phone calls within, I think it's forty-eight or sixty, forty-eight or sixty hours of receipt. There's no way for staff to actually verify that that is in fact occurring. So this idea of including a customer service satisfaction survey, so we can kind of hear about some of the issues that our program participants are facing in the program. And so we can get a little bit more direct feedback to the council about what's working, what's not working, maybe identify additional ways in the future that we could take the program even to the next level beyond that. So hopefully we'll have kind of cool, next time around, we might have cool tables and charts that we could show stats and see how we're doing. And additionally, with the the Campbell Municipal Code, there's some sections which are outdated, particularly which relate to the administration of the program, which we felt having establishing an annual review process would help us. And our, we have a number of housing agreements which are out of date. This is effectively whenever, like the Crestly Homes project is an example. As we advance with new housing agreements with the developers and also the home buyers, we just want to make sure it's very clear, the program requirements, the recertification process, so on and so forth. And these are all areas of improvement. Now, in terms of fiscal resiliency, there's really kind of two parts. We have that, we are going to be looking at the program at large. But within the report, this section, we're just talking about just kind of what can we do in the short term? So first and foremost, I want to make it clear that right now, the whole program is being charged against a singular fund. It's Fund Two Three Three was created following the dissolution of the city's redevelopment agency and has a finite amount of money, which is every year depleting and not increasing at the same rate. Our current administration cost is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. That's charged directly, that's paid directly to House Keys, where management of our program. House Keys does collect a number of miscellaneous transaction fees, which kind of raises the raises the total contract value up a little bit. I think last year, we'd done a calculation of staff that the estimated contract value, it varies depending on the number of units which are sold and exactly how many subordination agreements and other little miscellaneous documents are executed, was about a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. In addition to that, the program is supported by point four FTE of a senior planner, that's myself. And we also pay out any legal costs, which we've had a number of legal cases related to this program in the recent past. And but we, the program does earn revenue from unit sales as well as loan payoffs and interest and the collection, we had a singular in Luthy, which we collected last year regarding the Mozart Homes project. So big store, big pictures that are are the problem that we're identifying is that our costs are exceeding our revenues. It's not sustainable. In the short term, we've identified potentially increasing fees which are charged to home builders, just something we could look at in greater detail. And separately establishing a fund to purchase units from participants. And we outlined a little bit more in the report on how that might work. In regard to our rental program, there's fifty-one units in total. Spray across five developments, all kind of having their own unique roles. But in terms of program challenges that we've identified, the first was that eligibility for these units is reviewed on an annual basis, which results in a higher turnover. And as a potential solution, we've identified potentially allowing rental units to exceed the income limit on the first occurrence of their annual certification requirements. Effectively, the city does an annual certification process where we verify that the income level of the people, the households which reside in these units still meet the income level of the units. Let's say it's a low-income household, but they've either taken on a new job or some some other life event or something has changed that would maybe no longer qualify them for the unit. Well, we effectively would require that unit to vacate and for a new unit, new qualifying household to enter the unit within, generally even oftentimes within the same year. So this would be a way to allow renters to stay a little bit longer. They could, they could go above the limit for a first occurrence, and on second, we'd give like sixty days to vacate. Secondly, we we have this point which is being contemplated in the report, which is to allow an increase of rents to market rate. So that would be effectively allowing some households to rental units to remain in a unit indefinitely. So even if as they get better jobs or something else might happen, their life situation changes, we would take in a a rate of, let's say, thirty percent of their income limit, and we'd have the the difference in income paid back into the program. There's a recertification requirements for legacy units, slightly unclear in our program. So this is to say, we had units, so in twenty eighteen, the city adopted BMR rent, a rental and application guide, which effectively created a two-prong test where they'd previously been a single-prong. So previously, you just, the income of a household determined whether or not a household could be in the program. But in twenty eighteen, we added also assets as a as a classifier. So if you had five million dollars in the bank, but you're making thirty thousand dollars in income, that that could disqualify you from the from the household unit. Now, from from the rental unit. But we had some units which had come in previously, and as they're coming up for recertification, it's becoming apparent that some of those households might have assets in excess of our established limits, and it's not entirely clear if we should be enforcing. of our established limits. And it's not entirely clear if we should be enforcing against those units or if those should be treated as grandfathered. In addition, there are occupancy standards. Within the program, this is kind of a simple item, just kind of oversight, is that we stipulate the maximum number of occupancies for like one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units, but we don't, we're, the, the guidelines are unclear for studio, they're just not stipulated. So just getting a little bit of clear guidance on whether or not we want to restrict those units to a maximum of two occupants or allow up to three, similar to our one-bedroom requirements. In regard to the ownership program, so we have 84 units, 16 developments. These units do, the first challenge which I identified is that units in the program do not remain affordable over time. So as homeowners build equity in their household, when they sell the unit, we, sometimes bumps up the level of affordability. Sometimes it's just a little bit, a margin of error results that unit no longer qualifying for, let's say, the low or even the very low income limit. So as, as an idea here, we could create a program to buy down the affordability when it's close. Not saying that we'd take market rate units all the way back to low income, because the, the cost of that would be significant, but sometimes when you're within a small margin of error, a little bit of money might be to help us maintain a unit at a lower level of affordability than otherwise would be possible. Another challenge is that the pricing procedures for resale remain a little bit unclear. This has everything to do with tenants often do improvements that there's, we need to have clear guidelines on like a depreciation schedule and determining how improvements that people put into their homes will be calculated in the sales price. But also at what point in time the city would want homeowner to conduct improvements. Let's say you have a carpet that's five years old, is obligation of the owner to rip that out prior to selling the unit, repeating the walls white, that type of thing, little, little things, but just this, those details are the things that, that cause difficulties implementing the program. And then lastly here, minimum standards are unspecified. And this is, this is speaking to the development of brand-new housing units. We often run into challenges with developers who often want to do the absolute minimum for these below-market rate units. So if, well, all the market rate units are being provided air conditioning units or dishwashers or refrigerators, they'll do, they'll make it as minimal as possible. So they'll try to not provide any of those things. We've generally addressed that in projects on a, on a condition basis. So add specific conditions of approval into an entitlement. They clarify that there's certain items need to be provided, but it'd be better to have a standardized approach, which generally applies about minimum standards. And then there was a fourth item here on, in the ownership program, which has to do with the unit maintenance issues during occupancy over time. So oftentimes, a once a unit is, once a household has been assigned a unit, they do, they can fall into disrepair, but they aren't necessarily maintained or painted. The roofs might fall into disrepair and it doesn't really trigger an event for the city to get involved and help them bring it up to the same standard as the neighborhood until such time the sale of the unit occurs. When turnover is frequent, it's less of an issue, but when somebody lives in a unit for 20, 30 years, that can become more of an issue and can even cause significant harm to a unit when it's not well-maintained over the life of a, of a program. So we're identifying, there might be a need every so often that we conduct an annual review, maybe biannual or something like that, where we go out and inspect units, identify those which are falling into disrepair and create a rehabilitation program where we would set aside some money to fix up units which are in disrepair and we could come back for that money at some point when the unit does sell. Loan program, again, this is kind of like a legacy issue in the first point. Some of our older loans, it's unclear. Homeowners want to get out of the loan. And they want to pay it off, but our loan terms on a lot of our older loans stipulate that there's only, only really upon the sale of a unit can you get out of the loan. So this would be providing a mechanism by which homeowner or people holding the loan would have the opportunity to use an appraisal, determine the percentage of equity that they own the loan, so they're paying off the greater of simple interest or a percentage of the loan which represented the original the equity of the home. So this is just one quick solution. And also just generally speaking, the loan program, the benefits of this program have really diminished in the community over time. So we used to offer first-time homebuyer loans and a greater amount of relief to more households. So there might be an opportunity here also to expand the program to help provide, say again, first-time homebuyer loans, but also expand it as other communities have to provide rent relief during pandemics and also support for middle missing, a missing middle house, housing. And I think this is the last one. I apologize. I know there's a lot of parts to this program, but the last is the compliance program. I know the council has expressed concerns about delays in enforcement. We've had a number of times where we've a renter or a homeowner has continued to operate in violation of the city's, of the, of the agreement on their property and we have not taken immediate action, oftentimes because we need to fund the legal cases. So we've been generally adjourning into closed session to determine whether or not we do wish to take action. So this is just more of a broad policy where the council could create an enforcement fund by which rather than us waiting for our next, say, closed session meeting that we'd hold, that we could have a general fund which could be used towards enforcement immediately. So upon the, the event of a violation, we just leave it to the BMR Housing Administrator to determine that yes, a violation has occurred and go ahead and proceed immediately. Eliminate all delay. City, and also there's another requirement, there's another kind of a technical detail within our contract. Maybe a conversation for that contract renewal as it comes up. But there's a provision within the contract which effectively indemnifies the city in the case of certain lawsuits. And there might be an opportunity to clarify exactly when the city should be responsible for legal costs as opposed to tendering the legal case to House Keys', House Keys' legal team. This is kind of getting at the overall program costs as well. And finally, there's a, there's a lack of administrative remedies. We often are encountered with homeowners who do breach their agreement. They, and they want a way out. Rather than going through a full lawsuit, they want to identify a path forward to bring, to remedy the violation, maybe pay a penalty, do something to try to make good on the fact that they did maybe improperly running in it or do something that they shouldn't have. And right now, there isn't any type of mediation or penalty program for non-compliance. So the city really pursues a legal action whenever this occurs. Which also tends to be more costly and raises, you know, the affordability of units. And again, this big picture, those are all kind of the short-term fixes, right? But on, on the, the whole, we're also identifying this, this greater program demand. We're looking at about plus or minus 1,600 new BMR units being introduced into the program over the course of the next eight years. Us just looking ahead, this program isn't really built or scaled for that number of new units being added. And the additional strain to both city staff as well as our consultant, the services which they offer, because they do offer services to a number of other cities and knowing all those cities are going to be going through the similar type of growth might be very difficult to manage. So we're also identifying just based on just those limitations and also the fact that the program isn't fiscally sustainable as it exists today, a need to have this outside program expert come in. We're targeting spring for that to occur. And we're going to be preparing an RFP to that effect. And part of the scope of work for that consultant would be to review current, the current state of our program and projected demands and also to, and to come back with recommended, recommended changes to program management and to expand the program into a more sustainable business model. So that's pretty much where we're headed. But I wanted to also just give an update, checking where we're at in areas where we're already running into some challenges. So with that, that concludes staff's presentation. And we're definitely interested in hearing some feedback from the council.
Thank you, Stephen. Questions for staff, Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions on item number three, and there may have been a couple, so I apologize. This is on the studio units addressing the oversight of the max limit. Yeah. It's, I'm, I'm just curious how that's defined as occupants just defined as adults residing in the unit?
Yeah, within the BMR app, owner or the application and participant guides, it just says no number of people. So it's not, it doesn't specify between minors and adults.
Okay, thank you. And second question, I, I understand it's not the item being discussed. I'm, I'm just curious if we have a general sense, if that's at all possible. When you're speaking about possibly going to a consultant, do you have a sense of what the budget scope of that may be generally roughly speaking?
Good question. Not specifically. In the media budget, we did ask for just a very conservative allocation of $200,000. I have talked with a few potential candidates. Would you think that's going to come in lower than that? But based, based on discussions, we'll see how it scopes up further, but I don't anticipate it'll be that much.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thanks. That's all my questions for.
Councilman Landry?
I think it's on this slide. Eligibility reviewed on annual basis turnover and your comment is allowed to exceed the first occurrence by how much?
Well, that'd be a program that we'd be creating. So the idea being that if they, right now, if they exceed by a dollar, they're exceeding. And so they're no longer an eligible household for that unit. So I think within, it could be up to 130%. I think we indicated some figure in the report as a program, but we also do have on the line, I'll say on the line, but on the call Julius Nanda, who's the CEO of House Keys, he can, on any one of these kind of like action items, I could say, like a, like a solution, he can actually provide a little bit more feedback based on industry standard and his experience and recommendation.
Okay, that's questions later for comments.
Vice Mayor Bybee?
So I have a question regarding the program administration, Stephen. In, in your report, in your presentation, you mentioned that it's difficult or challenging for staff to verify performance measures. And in the example of the telephone calls and the 48, 48-hour response, does House Keys have a mechanism in place where they track their phone, their calls and, and response time? And do they provide that to the city?
I can have Julius jump in a little bit more on that. They didn't have a ticket system. So when, whenever they, we do encourage as many people as seemingly possible to go through the ticket system, so it is a little bit more accountable and trackable. But I've never received a call log or anything to that effect. I don't think there's a good way to, to, to track call, this particular call came in, it was returned by this particular user at this exact moment in time. I haven't seen anything to that effect.
And does, has the city received complaints from the people, people that have not, have tried to work with House Keys and haven't been responded to in a timely manner?
I, I would broadly summarize, we have had concerns with the, the services of the program. From, from program participants.
Is it?
Call related?
Half a dozen? Is it 50? Can you quantify?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, going back to the overall program number, you have 217 units in the program. And a lot of those are kind of static. So on a given year, they don't really come up all that frequently. You do have a lot of people who are trying to enter the program, create a new account, that type of thing. Generally, those aren't really the ones which have concerns. It's generally the people who are trying to do something. Like they're trying to get a subordination agreement, they're trying to sell a home, they're trying to buy a home into the program. That almost at most points of the program, there's some concern or another. At, at, there's some, some kind of rub point where it doesn't really quite work out smoothly always. And yeah, I, I'm sorry, to just quantify it, I'd say again, maybe 30, 40 units come up in a given year at most. And probably good 30, 40% of those have some type of concern.
Okay, Councilman Gibbons?
Could I ask a quick follow-up?
Sure.
On, on the call logs, do you, do we, would we have the capability to track those or, or match those within the current system to complaints? Or is that, would, would that be something that the consultant would need to look at to create that capability?
Well, I, I don't know if I, let me put it like this. We, we do have Julius who can speak more to what his software capabilities are. I would question if whether or not that is necessarily, some of the metrics which we have are the best metrics to govern. We don't have any metric about that governs, like I could say, the subordination agreement or the sale of the unit or feedback on that. So there's feedback loop issues, which are sometimes a little bit even more significant than necessarily a phone call. I do find House Keys does respond and let them know that we'll get back to you with more information or something to that effect. Usually same week or something to that effect, even in the worst case. So they are reasonably good, but I'm just saying I don't have an ability to zero in exactly on, you know, 23 hours and 14 minutes, they, they did give that particular call back. So we can have Julius jump in. I think he's available. So I don't know if he's muted or otherwise.
We'll, we'll get to that, but let's go through questions first. Thank you. Councilmember Gibbons?
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor, I'm not intending to ask questions of these, during the discussion, we'll give the responses to these items raised by staff. So I just have general questions now. Okay, thank you. So thank you. I, I do appreciate the report. I think it's well organized and broken out. These are consistent with the questions we've been talking about and worrying about for several years. So I'm glad we're doing it now. I am a little, when I first read the report and you confirmed it at the beginning, this was reading to me like a contract negotiation with House Keys because a large percentage of these items and these recommendations directly impact the work and the work product of House Keys. So I'm just going to clarify, this information would be incorporated into the negotiation with House Keys for their next contract.
Yes.
The idea is to fix them now.
Correct.
The, the confusion was also because of the fact that you want to hire this consultant to do this program overview. I'm surprised there are consultants that can do that, but I got, my reaction was a little bit of the chicken and the egg. So we're going to do a negotiation with House Keys to make these changes. And ideally continue their services. And then we're going to get a report down the line that's going to say what else we might do and address the impact of 1,600 new units.
That's correct.
Okay. That, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure I understood it correctly. Okay, so one of the questions, Stephen, you remember, I remember I've asked a lot and I swear, sorry, it seems to me I never get a clear answer. And that may go back to the pre-2018 units. My understanding at the moment, and it relates to the report you just sent, my understanding at the moment is with inclusionary ordinances units, we stipulate a period of time and the units stay in our housing stock. With density bonus units, which usurp our inclusionary, they, by no state law, and I'm going to say two, three years ago, have to have equity sharing such that they are sold at market rate. And the city gets, I'm just saying 50%, and the owner gets 50%, but the housing that sold at market rate then leaves the BMR program and we lose a unit count. That is accurate?
That's correct. So what you're capturing here is, in the report, I'm broadly summarizing, not to overly complicate things. But you have the, the density bonus here, the bottom left, in the ownership program, there's no restriction on the length of affordability. So you could have a density bonus project or unit come into the program and then within a year, they could exit, they could sell the unit and it would no longer be in the program potentially. So, yeah, so that would be the, the case study here, that those are the units.
And they walk away with 50% of the, so a simple number. We, somebody buys a unit for $500,000 and it's below market. A year later, they sell it for a million. We split the profit 50/50. They get 250, we get 250. Okay, and the unit is gone. Over, I'm, I'm oversimplifying, but that's basically what happens.
I, I, I'll have Julius jump in here a little bit, but my understanding is on the equity sharing component, it, it's not that super advantageous for these units. They get to have the appreciation of that income level that they entered the program. So there's a
Oh.
So, yeah, so if, if the AMI goes up by 3% or 5% or 8%, and they see it one year, they can get an 8% and they see in it one year, they can get an eight percent increase in that AMI income level change, but they don't necessarily get the whole.
Okay, so I would just say thank you for that clarification. That is very new information and I would appreciate it as you go through this, that you really carefully revalidate that because that has not been my understanding provided by staff in the past. So that's, that's a help. This point being that out of the five hundred thousand, if it sells for a million, then they get one year's worth of equity. Um, then the city would then get, say, four hundred thousand and they get a hundred thousand. What I was getting at is the four hundred thousand that's remaining doesn't buy a replacement unit. That's where I was trying to understand how this works. And once you do a density bonus project, you end up there are no inclusionary units there. There's no inclusionary units because they've been usurped, the number has been usurped by the density bonus. That is true.
And I, yeah, so you're talking about in circumstances where you have an overlapping credit for it being both an inclusionary and a density bonus project. Which rules govern?
Yeah.
And I, I, yeah, I believe that the, the density bonus rules govern.
Okay, so I'm asking these questions because I'm trying to understand how it fits into the, the detail that you've, uh, outlined and how it would go forward.
If I can jump in because I'm not sure that's actually correct.
Okay, well, I'm waiting, I'm willing to wait for the, the best answer.
Because it, it, it has been my understanding actually that if you have a project where you have an overlap between inclusionary and density bonus, a city can impose the inclusionary requirement up to fifty-five years.
Okay.
Or whatever the, whatever the ordinance requires, which ends up, of course, lowering the equity, uh, uh, amount of the, of the property.
So I'm, uh, that's as far as asking the question because it's relevant to how we're going to move forward and all of that. So I appreciate that we need to clarify that. Thanks. Thank you for doing that. And I thought I read in your staff report that House Keys does take on legal costs. But your presentation here said we don't, and I was a little confused on that. Isn't there is, isn't there in the agreement that House Keys should take on the legal, uh, costs?
These, it's kind of two parts and maybe Bill can, our, our city attorney can jump in here a little bit more. But they have a special project fee, which is kind of like the, the legal cost. I think it's two hundred and fifty dollars an hour or something to that effect. But the idea here being is that, um, there's provisions within the agreement that in the event that the city is sued by a party in the administration of the program, House Keys indemnifies the city against that case. And the city tenders its, um, uh, its, uh, legal case to their attorneys.
Yeah.
Uh, for, for, for protections really effectively for them to take a suit on our case. Now, cases where the city pursues on its own accord, like enforcement of a unit where they're not uh, suing us, I guess you could say, those we provide, uh, legal funds
Oh, oh.
to House Keys to pursue that case.
Who sues who wins?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I didn't understand that. Thank you. Um, may I, um, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to respond to what you've written here. One of the things that we don't have to my knowledge is an accountability of House Keys for all the expenditures they receive for all different purposes, such as the six percent for the real estate sales and the, and the maintenance and, and remodeling of buildings. I think it would be helpful to understand all of the, what they've actually received versus the bottom line. Okay.
And, and I can just offer here on the screen, um, so not this year, but last year, as part of our, uh, contract renewal, we had actually done an analysis trying to capture, these are all the other misses. So you have the, on the top line here, you have the program administration fee. That's the flat rate fee the city pays of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred. All the other fees are billed to other individuals, not the city.
Yes.
And then we could calculate it. It was kind of an unusual year in terms of loan processing. As you know, we had like historically low interest rates. I believe in that particular year, we had more subordination agreements processed than I think in the history of the program. So we, I came at an unusually high eighteen thousand five, uh, seven fifty. And then we, I just, I, I think there's a maybe one or two BMR resales occurred and that's going to vary every year. So depending on how many units come up for sale, that, how much money House Keys gets from that will vary, but in our, in terms of gross, uh, total, how much they took in and the city gets a little percentage of the subordination loan, loan processing fees, they totaled up that a hundred and seventy-six thousand. So that was the contract value for what it's worth.
Right. So what I'm trying to understand is in some of your questions and asking for recommendations, you're saying, um, should they repaint? Should they re-carpet? And all of that. And I'm trying to understand how that impacts their cash flow. So I'm trying to figure out how to answer that question.
And, and I can, um, so the, the, it's the actual, um, seller of the unit which would pay out for those improvements. So that House Keys does not go in and rip out the, the carpets and do that work themselves. It's a, it's, it becomes an obligation to sell it to do those improvements.
So I, I didn't read that clearly in the report. So just, if you would, when you're putting it together, take another look at how that's phrased. Okay. You listed some, uh, housing, some projects and Madison has both ownership and rental and maybe it has a different name and I didn't recognize that. Because, but we know what the Madison homeownership ones are. Are there rentals at Madison under a different project name?
Uh, well, there are units, I mean, I, I think this is kind of maybe getting back at the APR a little bit, but we have lot, they're identified on the street Lottie Lane.
I'm sorry?
Lottie Lane is where the Madison.
So it's a separate name versus Madison. That's why I couldn't find them. Okay, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to know whether it was. The last, uh, question I have, uh, at this point is, um, the city doesn't track section eight units and that has nothing to do with House Key. I have one more after this, sorry. So it has nothing to do with House Keys or the city tracking any responsibilities. We don't get any credit. There's nothing involved in any of this that would address, because we have a lot of section eight housing. We have a great, great, great many units, which don't show up anywhere.
That's correct. So that, that totally, we showed the total number of BMR units which House Keys helps administer does not include the, uh, section eight housing. We do help encourage developers to consider section eight housing, but we don't administer those units in any way.
Yeah, I mean, for example, the Wesley Manor is all section eight housing. That's what I'm saying. So as part of your scope for the program, would you include some kind of an analysis of how much section eight housing we have? It's substantive.
Yeah, I mean, it, it definitely contributes to affordability in Campbell. So we can, we can bring that in.
Right, it does. Okay, and, uh, shoot, I had one more. Sorry, um, go, go ahead. I'll, I'll come to that.
So just a quick, a quick thing, I, the, let me get this into question more than a statement. A lot of, I, I appreciate all the, all the proposals and, and suggestions, but it seems to me, is it not, is it not that the, a lot of what we're trying to evaluate here is a program versus an administration of a program? So I'm having trouble, I'm, I'm we can ha, can we not have, let me make it a question. We have, we can have a, a good program and a poor administrator or a poor program and a good administrator. And probably it's in the middle somewhere. How at this point, when we haven't yet evaluated House Keys, that's not what we're doing tonight. How do we, how do we, how do we suggest that we take steps moving forward? Stephen, you're identifying issues in the program that, and some of them we don't even address before. So I would agree, we have to implement some of that. But some of it seems to me to be, um, is it being administered properly? It doesn't require a change? Or is it something wrong in the program and it's unfair to lay that on House Keys? So how do we go ahead and make, give you strong direction in what to implement here or what areas to look at? When we haven't done the evaluation yet of House Keys and that will come up in, I think, June, right? So does that, I'm trying not to just make it a statement, but is that, does that make sense? I mean, I, I, I have a tough time agreeing to a lot of what you're asking here because I don't know if it's doing well now or not doing well. And if it's not doing well, I don't know if it's because the program isn't proper or the administration of good pro, of good programs is not happening. It ha, it has to do with, you know, what, when I ask, can they implement a, a, a call center, we have that for Solid Waste, has that, and the JPA has it and also the, the, um, uh, trash company has it. But is that, is that because we don't have that demand in the program or is that because they're not doing things they should be doing? And because of that, I'm having a hard time saying, yeah, this looks really good. It's got a lot of good information, but I hear chicken before, before the egg and, and, and that's kind of what it is to me. I don't know how to move forward with this.
Well, I'll start broad.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I said, I know it's a big statement, but, but my question is like, how, how do we, how do we give you direction? Isn't it too preliminary to give you direction until we've actually evaluated how the program is being operated?
Well, they're, I mean, I'd say they're interlocking. I mean, irregardless of House Keys, Campbell needs to administer a BMR program. And I think some of these, irregardless of whoever's operating it, are just structural changes that we, we've observed that need to happen. So number one, you could put that in a bucket separately. Uh, with, with reserve the House Keys without getting into their contract and performance details. I know some of the struggle Stephen has is just not a, really having clear metrics. So I'll have Stephen speak more to this. So some of this is actually putting into the program. Likely into the contract. Let's get some clear metrics. Um, to your point, I, I don't think we've had, we've had, Stephen's had glimpses and indications that there might be some issues, uh, with our customers and getting service delivery and, and one-on-one working with House Keys on service delivery. And so we want to start versus just coming in and doing a whole audit on House Keys. You could, based on what you have, but just getting more data. Being fair to House Keys and, and creating more standard metrics to, for performance metrics, because that's not really in the contract to the extent we want. Weighing those out and establishing the, the data where we can get that and then coming back. So I think it is a two-part process. It would be bad for us just to jump to, to final conclusions and auditing without first doing one of these programmatic changes that we need regardless. Two, put in the program real performance metrics and then have House Keys build to, you know, start performing those metrics and then we can come back and see and have that, that, that final question and answer and then, and data-driven analysis of how they're doing. So I'll stop there.
And that's, that's the problem I have. Uh, one of our problems in the, in measuring collection and pickup for, for Solid Waste is are the, were the metrics okay? And were those metrics, um, communicated? So, so I think you're right that there are some things that are additional to our program or good, but how do we know today if, if the metrics are bad but accurate or the metrics just don't exist? And, and, and how do we know? I don't know if forty percent or forty units of complaints are, are a lot. I don't know, but how do we know that in, in a situation where somebody, where people compete and contend for these units and some aren't going to get them, that's called complaint driven at the end of the process, right? And some people are also just, are on the receiving end of, do you qualify? And maybe you should be moved out. It's complaint. So I, I don't even know how to evaluate complaints at this point because there are complaints can be built in because there's always somebody unhappy in this program. That's maybe that, I'm getting beyond the question, I guess, but.
No, it's a, it's a good question. It's a good way you're characterizing as well. I, I broadly characterize the received relationship with House Keys again as a partnership, right? It comes down to providing clear expectations. A lot of the things which we, I kind of would hopefully expect of the BMR administrators not exactly clearly specified in our scope of services. So I think that's kind of on our, on our end to be clear about what we'd like to be performed on and done. But, and, and annually, every year, when we do bring the contract forward for renewal, we do provide a very detailed summary of all the performance measures. And we provide a write-up about how well we did hitting them to the extent that we can. So although I may not be able to independently verify the, the phone log, uh, House Keys does provide us, to, to the extent that they can, um, but they believe their performance in that category had been, which we characterize in the report. And there's a number of other performance metrics that they do provide us feedback on. Sometimes they hit them, sometimes they don't. They provide an explanation for what happened, like somebody's trying to sell a unit, get in and out of a rental and it fell over the, the holiday break and they just really couldn't close it in the sixty-day rule and they, they provide an explanation, they, they explain it, right? So historically, the, the, the fact that last year we renewed their contract, we reviewed their compliance of those performance measures and we were reasonably comfortable with where they were. We were meeting our proj, our program objectives, you could say, in, in a broad sense. Now, there's, there's a second part to this, which, um, kind of, again, again, it goes down to the how do I put this? Setting clear program objectives, but also separately, I want to be, be fair to House Keys. Because they, that, oftentimes they're operating outside their scope. They're giving us more than what they've asked for, right? Like in this last year, last two years, they responded to COVID. They provided online materials. That wasn't part of our contract. They just did it. They've helped prepare agreements and documents which I thought were important for the program, like a pricing guide for developers. They've done, in some areas of, of, above and beyond, they provide additional translation services. They've done other things that weren't really in the contract scope. So it's kind of like a balancing act. So it's, I think it's, it's, it's important for us to get the right metrics that help us identify where program improvements are necessary. And then creating a very clear set of expectations in port, in terms of our scope of work that helps us get there.
But I, but I want, I want to avoid focusing too much on House Keys because they're not, they're not under the gun today and they're not being reviewed. So I'll leave it with, with this question. Maybe it's a rhetorical question. Is it fair for us to be providing input right now until we've had the evaluation of how the program is running? That, that's my, that's my bigger question. For me, I don't think it is. So I don't have good input for you because I want to wait till I hear the positives and negatives. Joyce can speak tonight, but that's not why we're here. That is why we'll be here in June, right? And get that. I don't know how to give you input before then, so.
May I?
Please.
Just to offer, as I said, chicken and egg and it's, um, and it took me a while. So I backed off and looked at what staff had told me that they were trying to achieve. And I, and I reread these with the frame of mind, structural changes that are needed to make the program
Right.
work. And I took House Keys out of it. So I was able to go through these and answer them on that basis. The ones that I didn't think needed metrics or react, responded to House Keys' performance, but rather the contract language isn't clear.
So, so, but let's hold it till we're getting into discussion in a way.
So I was trying to.
No, I get, I get, I agree with you. I'm, I'm in agreement with you too. Let me, let's do this. If no other questions, that's these open to the public. I think Julius is online and wants to probably speak. Uh, is there anybody in the chamber that wants to talk on this one? I'll turn to Steve first. I'll turn to the chamber first. Um, thank you. Let's see, do we have, is Julius on here still? I'm, I'm going back to attendees. Here's Julius. Did you want to speak, Joyce? Open up public comment.
Sure, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, a little louder if you can.
Sure, uh, can you hear me now?
A little better, yeah.
All right. Well, so just first of all, thank you so much for, uh, five years of working together on this and, and we're, we're pretty grateful. I know when we first started this in two thousand sixteen, we had maybe four staff, around a three hundred thousand dollar budget. And today we've, we're, we're gearing towards twenty-five staff and a three million dollar budget. And so we, we just really are grateful for our partnership with the city. I would just say that the, the structural, uh, change that I think is critical is right now the city pays House Keys a hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred dollars. We're on our third housing manager, multiple mayors, multiple council members. One thing that I noticed and I think that would go a long way to help our job and I think help the city structurally, even outside of evaluating House Keys' performance, is we'd be willing to reduce our fee to fund a full-time housing manager as, as our contribution to the city of, of Campbell. We have thirteen cities now, sixteen total rely on us. We're probably going to have thirty-five cities by the end of the year. I can just tell you right now that the cities that have a full-time housing manager just are worlds ahead of cities that don't. And I think it's worth it to me to lower the cost of this, of, of what House Keys cost the city of Campbell to put that kind of position in place. We'll help train, we'll help recruit. Um, we're probably one of the largest employers doing this work in the state right now. Um, we're pretty qualified to make this statement. I think it'd be, it'd go a long way for the city to, to really make that commitment to get a full-time housing manager. It hasn't happened. I've been working with, with you all since two thousand eight. I haven't seen it and it's just a big in thirteen years of working with the city of Campbell would be a big help to you to have that full-time housing manager. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Joyce. Well, I'm sure we'll discuss that when it comes back to council. Uh, Roger, you want to speak as well?
Hello?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Can you hear me better this time?
Yes, I actually can.
Okay, um, so I quickly wanted to, uh, highlight like there are like sixteen hundred units that are coming up. And, uh, as an incentive, uh, for, you know, people to put in.
A little louder. We're losing you a little bit, Roger.
Okay, uh, as an incentive to put in. Okay, uh, as an incentive to put in all these units. Uh, you know, state has given a bonus option. If you provide affordable housing, you know, you get this much bonus. Like does, uh, because we are trying to do the ordinance change, I would suggest the city come up with a program. To waive the permit fees proportional to the amount of uh, affordable housing included in these projects. Uh, so also uh, having uh, you know. Uh, multi-use uh, like commercial and housing is a great benefit for people who are going to be in these uh, affordable units. So uh, those were my comments.
Okay, thank you. And I'm quick. Do we have anybody else? I don't see anybody online.
I don't have anybody signed up.
Okay, thank you. So let's bring it back to council for discussion. That's what we're given.
So I'll, I'll, I'll keep my comments to, to where I think the council might want to have a discussion and then I can go back and respond to these issues if you prefer. I would just say that um, I did struggle with trying to understand what we were trying to accomplish. I took a step back and I said, okay, what is it that really will make? House key's job better and our city um, have more information fixing the contract. You know, just answering what I can said was structural kinds of things. Who does what? And all of that. And then that will feed into changes to house keys contracts that would be negotiated in June. So that's how I looked at it. But I would like to offer one other uh, thought, which is years ago, we had a um, housing subcommittee. And it's going back to the days of Don Burr. So this would be back in 2008 or so. And this housing committee did things like when they did the loan program. The housing subcommittee reviewed all the loans and made all the decisions. It never bought, it came to council. The housing subcommittee had the ability to work and manage. And of staff's questions about the program. So there's statements in here about money and, and different things. I would just put in the thought for a future analysis. Um, that if there's a, the role similar to what the house um. Housing subcommittee did years ago was very effective. Um, and um. Helped this. So uh, if I may, I'll leave it there and then come back with more specifics.
Others? Like Councilor Lopez?
Sure, I'm happy to, to go. Um, I, I, I saw um. I, I almost with all due respect to um, house key side as um, you know, they're, they're not necessarily being relevant to tonight's discussion. It's, it's. What, what do we want to do to improve the program? And you know, there's some structural things, a lot of common sense uh, suggestions. In here that were probably oversights at the time. Um, it, it's going to feed into the contract negotiations because um, we, we, we happen to have a house key, about the contract with house keys. Um, but, but I, I, I think regardless of um, the, the, the job that they're doing, and I do appreciate the feedback and discussion on, on that tonight. Um, that, that there's still a lot of common sense uh, ideas in here. So with, with that said and now framing, um, I'm, I'm generally um, supportive of, of um, most of the. Um, uh, suggestions that, that staff um, that staff has, has, has made in the report. I, I think a lot of these are, are, as I've said, common sense. I'll just highlight a couple of areas that I have of potential concern. Um, one is um, for um, number two, looking at, at the home builders fees. Uh, I'm, I'm open to this conceptually into an exploration of, of the idea and, and that's kind of overall where I am of. Um, you, you know, let, let's, let's um, a, a lot of these are worth exploring further. Um, I would just be wary of um. Uh, in, increasing the fees and, and the burden to home builders. They're too much. Um, in light of some of the other discussions we're having, some of the discussions tonight um, on some of these processes and um, the, the feedback loops there. Uh, number three, um, I, I feel that um, the, the number of days to vacate, again, probably a, a common sense uh. Update. Um, I just feel that 30 days is, is probably uh, low for this and, and probably not realistic for, for um, uh, some of the residents. And so if we're going to move toward this, if there's interest in that, um, I, I would think that at least 60 days to vacate might be more appropriate and, and realistic. Um, I, I appreciate the clarification. Um, also number three on uh, on the studio units. Um, I, and, and how that's defined. Uh, again, something that clearly is just an oversight and, and that we, we should be defining. Um, as a best practice. Um, I'd say I, I have a concern. Um, one, if we're choosing between two and three. Residents, I'd, I'd pick the higher number, but um, I have a concern there just with the, the definitions and, and maybe it's a. Uh, we should do a broader definitional update of not just studio apartments, but, but holistically. Um, just because if, if you have a, a family that's um, two adults and two children, that would theoretically be in violation. Um, of, of the provision. And so I, I just have holistic concerns there. Um. Great, great idea to have the mediation program for, for non-compliance. Um, thank you for answering the questions about the, the consultant budget. Um, I, I do want to come back to um, Stephen, what, what you're saying during the, the, during my follow-up question to Vice Mayor Bybee's. Um, question. And I, I think it speaks to some of the thought, the, the concerns and discussions here tonight. That I think the broader, more holistic issues of tracking the, the overall feedback and, and mechanism and thinking a little bit more strategically. About how we're doing that where, um, you know, earlier my thinking was I, you know, I can sit up here and suggest, oh, you know, we should add tracking the phone calls or we should add this or that. Um, but um, as, as you brought up, there's a more um, holistic issue there to make sure we're capturing the right feedback and, and right metrics. So. Uh, you know, I, I think as, as others have said, that's probably a, a further um, uh, discussion there, but. Um, you know, I, I also view this as a chance to give some overall strategic feedback. So um, that'd be a concern there. Um, I do appreciate the comments uh, made um, during, during public comment and. Um, uh, about potentially having a, a full-time housing manager. So. Um, I, I think all these things are, are worth uh, pursuing and, and following up more. Particularly in light of some of these discussions we're having about the, the larger. Um, the, the larger affordable housing numbers, the, the consultant. Um, and the long-term sustainability of the system. This could be a, a, a way to help support that. Um, I'm, I'm open similarly to the ideas that um, Councilman Gibbons brought up regarding the housing. Subcommittee into exploring that further. Um, it may be that those responsibilities are, are better. Um, addressed through uh, another structure. But um, I think all these things are, are good to um, to explore further. Um, and, and um, those last two items that they may. Um, you know, we may address some of those concerns by, by looking at one or the other. Um, but appreciate the, the discussion. Um, that's my overall feedback.
Councilwoman Landry?
Oh, yes, thank you. Uh, again, lots of work. You guys have been busy. Three, three agenda items here. Um, I would uh, concur with the mayor on. It seems like to try to ask us to make decisions or comments tonight without the study. Um, that you have proposed towards the end of your comments. Uh, because things like I asked how much above the income limit. Well. Is that some other cities have an, an amount or is there some recommend, recommendation that's going to come out of this report? Um, home builder fees. Um, you know, what are other cities doing? But also we're sitting here trying to have more affordable housing. The developers are already taking a hit on these and how low they have to sell them for. And then we want to add fees to that. So that does concern me. It concerns me that the, oh, I lost my uh, Zoom here, I think. Did it happen to you? We're all losing. I'm, I'm back now here.
We're off of Zoom.
Something's not working here.
Yep, we're trying to reconnect.
Mine says connecting. Am I supposed to stop speaking till?
So actually just clarify, we're not relying upon uh, the, the Zoom as a present, yeah, 14 uh. So, so the rule is since, since we're not availing ourselves solely of the Zoom meeting, um, and there is an opportunity for public to be here, we can continue, even though there's some problems with the Zoom function. Just to make that clear.
You're saying we can't, we can continue? Can?
Yes, we can.
We can, because we're not relying upon that as our only form of public communication.
Does this take us off of um, cities streaming as well and also 26?
But it looks as if the council chambers.
We're still recording audio. The audio is still recording and still streaming audio.
How does Sergio get to stay on and none of us do?
That's interesting.
That's interesting. I know, but you at least, but when you look up there, you're the only one.
Let me ask the attorney, should, do we? I don't, I mean, advise us here, do we continue or do we take a short delay?
Yes, um, since we are, are not operating exclusively under the uh, Senate bill that uh, allows for. Zoom meetings in the absence of um, actual in-house public participation. We can continue if uh, the council so chooses.
There's not normally requirement to broadcast whether it be.
Their, their.
Cast 26, uh, the city website, anything.
There is no requirement for us to broadcast under the Brown, under the regular provisions of the Brown Act.
And, and Madam Clerk, do we have an update from IT?
Yes, IT said that we are still streaming. Um, and we are all still connected.
So we can't see it.
You can't see it.
We can't see it, but we are still streaming. And in that case, let's, let's proceed. So. But, but they're telling us that we are actually broadcasting now. So assume, assume that we are on.
Okay, because I'm completely off.
But you're, but we're there, but they're broadcasting us anyway.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right. So let me think where I was. Okay. So I was talking about the home builder fees. And what burden that may place on them when they're already selling these at a very low rate. Um, I like the suggestion of looking into potentially having a housing manager. What does that mean? Is that a full-time staff person? Is that a consultant or a short-term position? Um, I also noticed the house keys contract gets renewed every year. And that seems like a tight turnaround. Liz is shaking her head, no. Huh? To have it just one year. It seems like it's a short turnaround within having to negotiate this every year. And would we consider having a two-year contract? I mean, that's just my comment. What was, it's, it's an also, also a, a lot of work to keep doing every year. When we're trying to um, keep this program moving forward. I'm concerned that the comment was made that this is not financially sustainable right now. And that's a very big concern for me. Uh, where, where are we going to get it? We're coming up on our budget. Um, you know, do we need to be allocating more money? Because. From what I understand, his contract's going to be negotiated at the same time our budget is going to be worked on. So would we be able to get that into a budget if we did increase his contract amount? Um, there was, I was hoping to have the slide here on all the individual um, topics that you had asked. I want to know more about how much above the income limit. Um, I want the assets, the comment that you made, you could have $5 million in assets, but only 30,000 a year in income. That seems like a disparity there that it should be total assets, total income. Let's see, what were some of these other ones? The occupancy, uh, a studio is pretty small. I live in one at 400 square feet. I cannot imagine three or four people in there, but. Uh, you know, I could see a couple having a baby and still not wanting to move out. So that would make it three versus two. So I could see that. But then if it's per person. If they have a second kid, does that mean now they have to move out? So I would want to have a little more information on the total number of people. Um, the ownership application and participation guide, these things sound good. A lot of your recommendations in here about the guides, the tracking. Um, things that we can give out to the public that make it easier for them to uh, know what's going on. Know where to get the information and have the participation guides and application guides ahead of time to make it easier. Uh, to apply and be part of the program. Uh, I'm trying to skim quickly here on this. The enforcement, um, I think we need to be stronger on enforcement. Um, there has been a couple of cases that have come up about this. And it seems like we're way behind. It may take years to get some level of enforcement. Um, so I, I would like to see that to be a stronger program. And uh, establishing a mediation and a penalty program. For nine, nine, non-compliance, I think that goes into what I just said also. So I think those are the main categories that you had asked about.
Vice Mayor, any comments or?
I, I too am struggling with this uh, because I do think it is a little bit the chicken before the egg. Um, and without. Data to support some of this, I, it's hard for me to um. Evaluate and, and determine what needs to be improved and what doesn't need to be improved. Um, I would also think that uh, there should be some discussion with house keys as part of this dialogue to. Get their input to what they see as deficiencies in, in the program or inefficiencies in the program and um. And I don't know if that's, if that, that conversation has been had yet. Um. Generally on, on the program administ, on the program administration, um, I, I, as far as uh. Doing the annual review with new legislation, I think that's um. Would be okay. I. The next uh, program administration challenge three, I guess, uh, to update the housing agreements to reflect best practices, I guess would be okay. I'm not sure about the in fee, increase the fees charged to home builders. Um, I don't know what that impact would be. Um, I, I, I just feel like I don't really have a lot of enough information to really. Uh, recommend, approve recommendation on all of these. Probably clarifying the studio, the number of occupants in the studio is a good thing. I, I would imagine exploring the, the program to buy down the affordability of units would be a good thing to have. I guess I'll leave it at that. And then I, I also wanted to comment on the loan, the loan committee. Um, I, I was giving that some thought and. Trying to think back from my thinking cap back to 2008. And I recall that committee um. Was formed and the main purpose was to review and approve um, the HCD. First time the home buyer loans. Um, and it was a much. Uh, less complicated program with very, you know, our program has expanded since that point. So. It, it served its purpose, but I don't know overall whether that committee should be making recommendations on the overall. Um, loan program and BMR uh, uh, program. I think that needs some further uh, discussion and evaluation.
Hey, thank you. And then appears everyone were back, at least I was able to, to um. I was able to come in. Um, just comments, I'll make some comments as well, since everyone else has spoken. Um, as I said, I have a problem saying full speed ahead. It, to the extent that house keys. A lot of the input would come from house keys in June, but to the extent that they can give input to the program, what they feel works and doesn't work. Prior to that would be helpful. Um. There are things like fees. I, I don't know if that's going to actually be counterproductive and. And lead to fewer units and it's not a good idea, but we don't know yet. I, I, I'll say this in general. Um, to the extent you, you want to make structural changes, either new processes that we don't have now or processes that maybe haven't held up over changes over the years. I trust staff to do that. And I trust staff to say, this is, these are lapses in the program or, or, or. The program lacks these certain things or these aren't working anymore because, and I support. Your, your guidance on that as to where we should do it. What? Where I'm hesitant is in anything where the house keys. The feedback on the review of house keys in June would help us understand. The feedback on the review of House Keys in June would help us understand when we can ask, why is this not working? And here's some feedback on that. On those, I'd say I'm hesitant to move forward. So, um, I'm kinda, I'm kinda leaving it to staff to say. I think Stephen identified a few of them. What's, what's structural that we don't do now that we should do? And go ahead with those. I'm fine with that because you're improving the program. For, for making the program better and things that we may have that may not be implemented right. I have to wait till, till the House Keys review. But I encourage also perhaps House Keys can participate in this process before then. To give staff feedback that will help the report that we get back in June. So I kind of leave it that I just don't know what exactly. More to tell you. I'm just kind of stuck afraid to, to make statements on stuff I just don't understand yet. Councilor Gibbons, you want to?
Thank you. One question I had is. We, um, how many units are coming into the system? I'm not aware of how many units are coming into the system in the next six or eight months. I mean, Cressley's is on hold. Uh, do we have any other projects that are under construction that are going to have units coming in?
So i- in terms of timing coming into the program, House Keys has to help prepare those development agreements and home buyer agreements?
That's why I'm, I'm asking it, uh, uh, for that reason, but yes.
Yeah. So pretty early in the process. So right now they're in the process of preparing those agreements for Cressley as a, as a case study example.
Projects. Okay. So quite clarification. When are those agreements negotiated with Cressley? Now, after they have a permit, after they're getting occupancy? What is the timing of those agreements that would influence us right this minute?
Oh, good questions. You're saying in terms of those, those agreements being modified to reflect the council's aid direction tonight? Or would, would your actions be impacting agreements under development?
Yes.
Is that where we're going?
Yeah.
Yeah. So. Uh, uh, generally not. I mean, a lot of those agreements, we've already had back and forth. So those are in progress. So for new units which would be entering the program, we would be probably, we need to first create that template. Run it past our own internal city attorney's office. Make sure we're in agreement with the new language and wording that we've come up with. So probably we, we're talking late summer, probably before we actually have.
There's no, uh, my, the second part of the question is there's no urgency. If they came in January. There would be no urgency or no negative impact to any projects because the agreements weren't ready.
That's generally correct.
Okay. So. I, I, I'm a little more comfortable with some of the recommendations that are in here. Uh, but I think the mayor phrased it appropriately. We can trust staff to pick and choose. What should be negotiated with House Keys. So when they come back with the agreement. Um, it blended this together because there are some things that are important. However. If we're going out for an RFP for this big picture, a lot of this. Even more than data from House Keys is really going to be somebody who knows what they're talking about that can give us that information. That's why staff's proposing this. So, um, I would prefer. To have that report to us. Would that be ready by November, December?
Good question.
I, I, you see why I'm asking. Okay. And we're, we're changing council, which is going to make it a little difficult too, but. Um, my thought is what's the timeframe, the critical path? All of this is really good information, lots of really good lessons learned. And we do need to negotiate with a consultant in June. Whomever, whatever we decide. Um, and there's a lot that can be gleaned and put into it. But knowing that it's going to change.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, so Campbell and the council wants to be, you want to be strategic and, and know the right information at the right time to make the right decisions. And that's why, I think from staff's perspective, we tried to go here some short-term things now regardless, quick fixes, easy to fix. So I guess I'll reframe it this way, coming out tonight and your question, I, I think still there's some obvious quick fixes structurally that we can do. Things you had questions on, like you need some more analysis on fees and impact to home buyer or developers. We're going to table that, come back to it later. The real quick fixes structurally move forward with, that's bucket one. Bucket two absolutely goes into the House Keys contract metrics, a couple of other things will work with them. And they'll come back on the contract. And then anything else, I think broadly. If we need more analysis data or it's a more holistic question, we're going to wrap into this, um, this outside audit to come in. And I'd say I can't commit to your timeframe right now. It's my expectation. We'd go out for an RFP late spring, which is like a month or two from now. Um, hopefully we have someone on board by summer. And then it's just a matter of how, how long it, for it takes them on recommendation. I can't commit yet to when that is.
So I, I would just offer, um, I don't, I agree with your summation of what the previous housing, uh, subcommittee did, but. It's, it was a very effective process at the time. So I was just saying that there may be as part of this consultant's. Perspective, a better way to utilize councils of, of, uh, time. I, I must say, I don't think it's that hard to get a subcommittee, I mean, an executive, what do you call it, a study session or executive meeting. If we need to have one, council will meet. So I wouldn't use that as a rationale. But if they're going forward as a recommendation to be more effective at communication and decision-making. I think that that's fine for the consul, consultant to bring back in whatever form they recommend. So I would support, um, what you're saying.
Okay. Let me, let me ask staff this. The, the goal here was direction on the improvement plan. Got a bunch of it. It's not all, not, not all the same, but is it, or have we achieved the goal here? And I mean, because. I don't think we go much more because we just don't know what else to tell you.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we're going to put forward, you know, motions and resolutions each item. Like, you know, we have minutes. There's definitely areas where you flagged, you need a lot more analysis. We're going to table those and put those aside. We definitely have feedback on areas that are simple to move forward with. I, I, from staff's perspective, we have clear direction on next steps.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think so. I, I think, I think we'll have a better discussion when we have more information and get some feedback on the actual performance. But, um, yeah. Comment.
Is there contract up in June? Or Ja, or December?
It's correct. Their, their contract comes, is, runs through June thirtieth. So there, we're going to be bringing back a report with House Keys prior to that. And I, I think generally speaking, looking over all these items which we've brought before you, getting at this whole idea. What's immediate and what's, what can we wait for? I, I just went through our whole list. There's nothing in here that's really pertinent or critical that we. Take action on or get clear direction on today, with maybe the exception of one, which has to do with, um. The, uh. Whether or not to enforce on a rental unit which entered the program previously, that when they're going through the recertification process, that doesn't. Effect a current, uh, case that we have. But the rest of these are more or less just general program improvements. We can. Take the feedback which we've heard from you and work to weave those into the program. So I think that we've heard it, pretty good feedback across the board on those.
And, and I think the mayor said it best is. We're looking at you to make the recommendations on the changes to the contract. Right? And it seems like if these are the recommendations you're making, I don't think anybody's objected to those comments that. Since this consultant won't get on board and the rest of this won't be readily available. Just work on the contract, knowing that all these things you're bringing up could be part of the House Keys new contract, I think would be. What you were saying, right, Paul?
I, I try, I have to.
Yeah, we have to.
I, I, I give my faith and put my faith in staff to. To figure out what's, what's, um, structural and can be done now, what, what should wait for some guidance.
Right. And, and, and keep in mind the House Keys contract is annual. So I mean, we, uh, start with those fixes now. And then as the consultant comes back. Um, um, at this point, let's just say fall, winter, next year, you got broader recommendations. That'll feed into, of course, bigger changes in the program, but then the, the next year's contract, if, if that helps in timing.
And then Stephen, you said the one thing that you did need an answer to sooner than later. You don't need that tonight though, right? We don't have a recommended action tonight.
No, that's correct. So what we should be doing is if the council is in general agreement on that particular item, we would need to agendize it to bring back the BMR rental. Application guide. To clarify how that program is meant to apply to units, but would help us potentially have a state of enforcement. Against that particular unit if the council were to be. Generally accepting of that idea that we grandfather. Units that were under that single-prong test as opposed to the two-pronged income and asset test, which we have today.
So those are going to come back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can close it.
I do appreciate, um, the staff report. I know it was a challenge in chicken and egg and I did that, but. I am gen, very appreciative because I've been concerned about the program. It's one of the reasons we did one-year contracts. It was just trying to make sure we figure it out. And letting it go for two years wasn't going to accomplish that. So I am very appreciative. I think. A vast number of the questions that, that I wanted to see asked have been asked. And that's, to me, a major step forward. So, um, I really, uh, appreciate that.
Thank you very much to, to staff for this. Um, we've gone a lot longer. I think we, I thought we were going this, this item with no break and all that is. Is council okay with holding off on committee reports and doing it next time? One, one, one?
Uh, I spent seven hours on a bus today on behalf of the city of Campbell. Uh, going to the first major solar storage, uh, facility out in the Boondocks of King County. And it provided enough solar power and battery backup. For the entire city of Campbell.
Wow.
And I'll have pictures next time.
Okay. Thank you very much. So we can hold off on everybody's agreeing. So then we'll adjourn. Thank you all. We'll adjourn to the next regularly scheduled council meeting Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand twenty-two. You know what?